Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And great, well, this, one of the really great things about this first meeting in January is every two years we'll be swearing in the new and returning members of the city council. And we're really excited about our new, our new members and looking forward to working with you. This is one of the really great volunteer opportunities here in Salem. I think one that is as interesting and as challenging as any of them get. So we'll we'll really look forward, I think, working together. Counselor Hoy and I were talking about this morning, we're looking forward to an opportunity to just kind of sit down here at some point and get to know each other since we're not having dinners together, which has been really one of our losses is not being able to sit down and eat together before each meeting, but hopefully, since it is 2021, we will get that chance sometime this year and be able to do it for the next couple of years after that. So I really look forward to it. So I'm going to call on the city recorder to please swear in each of the council.
Okay, we'll get started with Counselor Stapleton. Counselor, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Virginia Stapleton.
I am Virginia Stapleton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the city charter.
And the city charter.
And ordinances of the city Salem.
And ordinances of the city of Salem.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties of city counselor for Salem.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties of city counselor for Salem during my continuance therein.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
It was a little long there at the end, but thank you.
Getting to the end of that gets a little tricky.
All right. Okay, Trevor Phillips, Counselor Phillips. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Trevor Phillips.
I, Trevor Phillips.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the city charter.
And the city charter.
And ordinances of the city of Salem.
And ordinances of the city of Salem.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully and lawfully perform the duties.
Of city counselor for Salem.
Of city counselor for Salem.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Great, thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Next up is Jose Gonzalez, Counselor Gonzalez. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jose Gonzalez.
I, Jose Gonzalez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the city charter.
And the city charter.
And ordinances of the city of Salem.
And ordinances of the city of Salem.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties.
Of city counselor for Salem.
City counselor for Salem.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Thank you. Congratulations. And Vanessa Nordike, Counselor Nordike. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Vanessa Nordike.
I, Vanessa Nordike.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the city charter.
And the city charter.
And ordinances of the city of Salem.
And ordinances of the city of Salem.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties.
Of city counselor for Salem.
Of city counselor for Salem.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. And Mayor.
Yes.
You're up. If you would, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chuck Bennett.
I, Chuck Bennett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And the city charter.
The city charter.
And ordinances of the city of Salem.
Ordinances of the city of Salem.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties.
Faithfully and lawfully perform the duties.
Of Mayor for Salem.
Mayor for Salem.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Good. Well, congratulations, everybody. This will, it's gonna be a real interesting interesting next couple of years. Now, I'd like to go, we'll move on to election of the council president. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I nominate Counselor Hoy as council president.
Second.
Second by Leung. Are there any other nominations? All right, why don't we just if you don't mind, we'll just move Counselor Hoy by acclamation as your council president, okay? Excellent. Congratulations, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, any additions or deletions, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I move additions and deletions to the agenda. Those include item 5. B, a motion from Counselor Jackie Leung regarding declaring racism as a public health crisis. Item 6. H, a strategic approach to protest assemblies and marches in our community, and a variety of written testimony on various agenda items.
Any, do I have a second? Did I get a second?
Second.
Second by Nordike. Discussion. Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sent a proposed either amendment or addition to one of your motions in, in Agenda Item 5, and I'm hoping, I asked the city manager to send it to all the counselors, and I'm hoping they all have it now because it's a fairly long one, and I'd rather have them have that in front when I make the motion, and I think it is.
Counselor, the way I, I'll propose we move through this is I'll make a motion on 5A, which is a fairly broad call for a look at some of the issues we're going to be talking about, and then call upon you to do an amendment, and then we'll vote on the amendment and the final, or I, we can do it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Right. Council comments. I'm gonna make just one very quick one. We, as you're probably aware, have had vaccinations beginning out at the state fairgrounds by Salem Health, who's been working, Salem Health has been working on this for some time, and is working with other groups, looking at other locations for the vaccinations to be given to help protect our families and friends, and vaccines will, were interrupted briefly when they ran out, I think, yesterday. They are back in business, expect to be pretty steadily in business now. Right now, they're taking 1A, folks who are 1A, they ask you to, if you come in, are you a first responder under the category 1A? But it's, it's moving right along. I think we're going to see a lot of vaccinations occur and available. It'll be out at state fairgrounds, probably the best way to get there, turn right, go out 17, turn right or left, whichever way you're coming from, onto Sunny View. Then turn into the parking lot there, whatever gate that, that main gate into the fairgrounds armory. So I think it's a, a real opportunity to move right on ahead and really thank Salem Health again for the work they did. And other than that, I'm just really glad to be back, back at this. It's been almost a month now since we met, so. Counselor Hoy, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, and first I want to congratulate all of our new colleagues. Welcome to the Salem City Council. I look forward to serving with you. Beyond that, there, there are so many things I want to say tonight, but there isn't time for, to say them all. But it gives me no pleasure to speak about a topic that is of utmost importance. However, out of a sense of duty to the city, its residents, and the people who have dedicated their careers to serving, I must. The miasma of hate, lies, and conspiracies emanating from the White House has made its way to Salem. Last week was a horrific moment in American history. The very existence of our democracy was threatened by a corrupt president and his followers. You might think it was just in Washington and doesn't impact us here in, in Oregon, and you would be mistaken. Because three weeks ago, a very similar, very similar behavior was exhibited right here in Salem at our state Capitol by some of the same people who were in Washington DC last week. People who espouse white supremacy and hate continue to harass our residents, our businesses, and the seat of our state government. Salem police officers, along with Oregon State troopers, were attacked by an angry mob trying to use force to control our government. And unfortunately, those individuals were assisted by someone elected to public office. Someone who swore to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States and the laws and the constitution of the state of Oregon. And that person was Representative, State Representative Mike Nierman. He was caught on camera letting insurrectionists into the Capitol to attack our police officers. They used physical force and pepper spray on our officers in attempt to force their will on our government. This dangerous and outrageous behavior is completely unacceptable. It is contrary to the oath he took, it is contrary to everything that America stands for, it is contrary to the ideals of the flag they pretend to hold so dear. Representative Nierman must be held accountable. I call on the Speaker of the House to do just that. And I call on the district attorney to consider criminal charges against Representative Nierman. And I call on Representative Nierman to hold himself accountable and resign. You cannot be a state representative and facilitate an assault on our Capitol or our police officers. You can't. He either needs to resign or be expelled from the House. I've said it many times, and I will continue to say it. White supremacy is not welcome here, hate is not welcome here. I call on my colleagues and the staff to do everything within our power to ensure that Salem is a safe and welcoming city for all. Thank you.
Very much, Counselor. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What Counselor Hoy said was exactly what I was gonna say, but I, I'm coming at it from a slightly different angle. First of all, congratulations to the new counselors and the returning counselors. Secondly, what has happened here is national events have come down to Salem. I said it in a, something I posted online. The rot at the top of our nation has torrented down to Salem. And it's down to us because we're the state Capitol. And I will tell you that it is our citizens who work in the state Capitol building. It is our police officers who are responsible for the area outside the Capitol Mall. And then to have an elected official totally abrogate his duties and let people in who ended up causing harm to Salem police officers and could have caused harm to legislators in the building, could have caused harm to citizens of Salem who are in that building. You know, that's, that's totally unacceptable. I agree with everything Counselor Hoy said, and I will also tell you that I have left a message with the district attorney Paige Clarkson and asked her to investigate this fully. If there are crimes that were committed, and it appears that there were, he must be accountable for this, just like the people at the top of our nation must be accountable for this. I will also tell you that I, the motion that the mayor and I were discussing earlier, I have a motion that I will be making that condemns white supremacy and institutional racism, and that'll be being added somehow to what the mayor does, wanting a larger commission to look at this. This is beyond disgusting. It, it should not happen here, it should not happen anywhere, and we as the council must stand up against it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Leung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Happy New Year, everybody. It's good to see everyone again, as well as welcome our new counselors. You know, it's been 11 days since the start of 2021. And let me tell you, I am exhausted. You know, I had some expectations coming into this new year that there would be some positive changes, but the sad reality is that this year is still an ongoing continuation of the drastic conditions that we're continuing to face since last year. And in reflection, in response to the ongoing matters that we're experiencing that the mayor, as well as Counselors Hoy and Anderson has talked about, I have a motion under 5B that I'll be discussing later tonight. I also recognize that council will need to suspend Rule 5J to allow council to vote on the item, and I implore council to vote on suspending that rule when we reach Item 5B. Some other important items I would like to bring up. In the past month, there were three pedestrians who were hit by a car and killed in Salem. From my understanding, one pedestrian death is still unsolved as a driver left the scene has yet to be identified. Please, everyone, especially our drivers, you have the responsibility to drive safely and to be aware of your surroundings, especially at night and early mornings when it is foggy. Be aware of your surroundings, do not drive impaired or distracted. Also, as a reminder to folks, it is a new year, so that means new budget for 2020. There's budget committee meetings that have, it's our five-year forecast on Wednesday, January 20th, starting at 6:00 PM virtually. I strongly urge our Salem residents to review the budget and to be a part of the budget process. The budget proposal is scheduled for currently April 14th with budget committee review starting on April 21st to May 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to start off by just saying that it's an honor for me to be here, and I'm humbled by the opportunity to serve my community in this way. And I thank you to all my supporters and volunteers, friends, and family who helped get me here. It's truly an honor to be here, serving with you all, so thank you. I also wanted to start off by saying some words from Joe Saxton. She said something really important that I wanted to bring here today, and that is, we cannot heal what we cannot name. And we cannot treat what we do not diagnose. We cannot minimize our way out of this. We cannot unify over chasms we neglect to identify. Racism, white supremacy, antisemitism, Christian nationalism, exceptionalism, misogyny, and more. These are the evils at work in our society today, and it is vital that leadership at every level speak out against them. At every level of government, in business, and within our faith communities. When we say these words, we are setting the guardrails of what is expected from our citizens and as a city. What we will and will not tolerate. I want to also say that as we speak these words and take this stand, it's only a start. And there's so, there's only so much that I can do or that this body can do here. It is imperative that we all work within our own circles of influence, in our families, in our places of work, and in our places of worship. To take a stand against these powerful forces and call out such hatred. We are a nation built on violence, genocide, and slavery. We have long been driven by power and greed. What happened last week in Washington was not surprising. It was heartbreaking and it was infuriating. Who ignore the roots of these problems will not help in dispelling them. We must name them, take a strong stand against them, and never stop working towards a more peaceful, tolerant, and loving world. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't repeat what's already been said. I have a few housekeeping matters first. As we all know, because of the wildfires, there's been a lot of logging done in the canyon. And these wildfires have accelerated the removal of trees in the watershed area that supplies Salem's water. I have checked in with our city manager and our public works director, and they have advised that the city tracks and comments when appropriate on timber sales in the watershed. There has been significant hazard tree removal, and so on and so forth, and our public work staff is reaching out to Oregon Department of Transportation, Department of Forestry, and the US Forest Service to see if we can get information on salvage logging proposed in the area. As people may recall, this city council has already allocated funds to help prevent and mitigate threats to our water supply from erosion caused by wildfires. And the city has a drinking water monitoring program on the city website. So I wanted to be sure I shared that information because we have so many challenges happening all at the same time. Another thing that I don't want to get lost is homelessness in all of this. I recently toured Cascade Gateway Park with Corey Poole, and I very much appreciate him showing me around. I also recently visited the Home Youth and Resources Center. Thankfully, a member of our community, Dolores Milnerzick, knitted hats by hand and asked me to donate them to our unsheltered neighbors. With inclement weather and cold and a lot of people living outdoors, simple gifts like this are a rare reminder of compassion and kindness that doesn't make the news these days. It feels like only hate makes the news these days. I look forward to visiting Home Youth and Resources again to get a tour and to sit down with their leadership to understand homeless youth. Largely, these are young people who live in the shadows and who don't make the news, and who are struggling to find work and to complete their studies and graduate from high school. I also look forward to touring a local business this upcoming week that looks, that is in the market for making tiny homes for individuals without homes. This and much more is coming because, as we know, while these riots continue, we still have other crises going on right now here in Salem and unfortunately, all over the country. On tonight's agenda, there is going to be a presentation on the city police's strategic approach to protests. Unfortunately, we have businesses in the city of Salem like Trader Joe's and Winco that are being harassed simply for following the rules to require masks for the sake of their customers' health and their employees' health. The question is, which businesses will these people target next? And how can our police help private property owners assert their private property rights? And now, I wanted to get to the main chunk of my remarks, and I will be mindful of the time and move as quickly as I can. It's time for the city to condemn racism and white supremacy. Hate has no place in Salem, and the more we say it, the stronger and safer we become as a community of all colors, all genders, all creeds, and much more. We need to send a message loud and clear that each of us deserves safety, justice, equity, access, and dignity. But we cannot do that if we deny the existence of white supremacy and racism. And here are just some examples. March 2017, a man enters Al-Aqsa, a Palestinian family-run business in, on State Street, and yelled at them to get out of America and saying, Arab, you need to leave. That was reported on August 2019, Salem Reporter reports that a man walked up to three Latino men sitting in the Ike Box Coffee Shop, spits on one of them and calls him a racial slur. When police questioned the man, he simply said he didn't like Latinos. January 2020, K2 News reports that the Salem Police Department confirmed the presence of racist, antisemitic, and homophobic graffiti at Sprague High. June 2020, there are photos all over Facebook showing whites only and SS spray painted at McKinley Elementary School, an elementary school. October 2020, a man is criminally charged with murder, a hate crime, and other charges for allegedly shooting a black man multiple times and calling him the N-word. And then December 2020, a sticker of a severed black man's head and other stickers are posted near a black-owned downtown business. These are just some of the examples of what has happened in our city. In response to this, what do we tell children in our community? What do we tell our Salem Kaiser student body that is majority student of color? What do we tell our business owners who have had to close their doors for the day so that an angry mob can parade through the downtown screaming four-letter words and wielding assault rifles? Will we tell people in response to these individuals who purportedly backed the blue until they were arrested? People who protest shutdowns while shutting down our businesses out of fear and harassment? What do we say to our community? We say that hate is not welcome here and that we unequivocally condemn racism and white supremacy. And our police will protect all citizens. Mayor, it's time. Several city counselors and I have already condemned white supremacy and racism in our individual capacities. But now it's time for this council to pass a resolution condemning white supremacy and racism. Words matter. Our community needs to hear us say this, and of course, it cannot be words alone. We must take real steps to ensure the safety of our community from criminal and unpatriotic attacks. We already know the attacks on the nation's Capitol. We already know at least five have died and scored have been injured at the nation's Capitol. And now, the FBI has sent a memo to law enforcement agencies across the land warning of possible armed protests at all 50 state capitals starting as early as this Saturday. Mayor, our residents don't feel safe. Mayor, it's time to call in the National Guard. We need a stepped-up presence of law enforcement for everyone's safety. If an armed march is coming to town, it should not be Salem PD and OSP alone who respond. We need as many people on, we need as many boots on the ground. We don't want law enforcement to be overwhelmed, injured, and killed, just like they were at the nation's Capitol. We want peaceful protests to remain peaceful, which can be accomplished with the deterrent presence of law enforcement. So we need to talk with our city manager about how exactly we go about doing this to ensure the safety of everyone. Protesters, counter-protesters, journalists, police, and so on, our businesses, prevent destruction of private and public property, and to uphold the rule of law. We need to send a strong message. Thank you.
Stay tuned, Counselor. We'll give you a chance to vote in favor of this, this evening. Who we got? Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. And to my now colleagues on this august body, thank you. It's an honor to serve with you. I'm utterly thankful and humbled to be able to represent War III in southeast Salem. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Trevor Phillips. My day job is that I'm an emergency room doctor at Salem Hospital. And I get to work with a, a team of real-life superheroes, and together it is our job to essentially save lives. And because of that, I was drawn to, you know, volunteering on the Homeless Solutions Task Force, and now to run and serve on this Salem City Council. And I am here to do things like ensuring that we continue to, you know, ask for and advocate for those things that would make a difference on homelessness, the city's number-one issue. Specifically, ensuring that we do everything possible to get a navigation center, a sobering center. And I also like the idea of a mobile crisis response unit. But there has been so much that happened in the last year that it's impossible for me to get all my thoughts out tonight. But I will do my best to sum up. I am incredibly grateful and thankful to be here, but we have real work to do. It feels like the last year has shown how important it is to just speak the truth. The scientific method is that which determines reality from non-reality, that which is true and not just random chance. So let me say unequivocally that we have achieved an incredible accomplishment as a species. We have created not one, but two safe and effective vaccines against the COVID-19 virus. This deadly pandemic is ongoing. I have not recalled a day in the last several weeks where we've had fewer than 1,000 cases reported in 24-hour period. We've had over 1,600 deaths in the state of Oregon since the onset of this pandemic, which is actually only the fourth, we're the fourth best in the entire which is actually only the fourth, we're the fourth best in the entire country. We're better than 92% of our cohorts in terms of a population-based death rate or rate of infection. So it's because of the work that bodies like ours have taken, that the region has taken, and that the state has taken. It's all of us working together that achieves that. The vaccine is one incredibly important tool in our fight against this pandemic. Today, well, in my memory, probably tonight's historic, you know, meeting here and being the first time I've ever run for public office, will really in my mind be dwarfed by the fact that today was the day that I received my second vaccine for COVID-19. I cannot tell you the profound sense of relief, hope, and joy that I have after receiving that safe and effective vaccine. And it really is an accomplishment for all of humankind. I have heard other physician leaders refer to this as similar to when we put humans on the moon. It is just incredible that through rigorous science and clinical studies, we've done this thing in less than 12 months, and there's rigorous science to show that it works with clinical studies to back it up. So please, when it's your shot, you know, be there and get your, you know, this is our shot, so get yours when your turn is ready. I would also like to commend, as the mayor did, you know, Salem Health has done incredible work to protect the frontline healthcare providers and now our community. The fact that they were temporarily out of vaccine is a good thing. This is part of the ramp-up. It's going to take time for us to vaccinate everyone. But the fact that they could get roughly 400 vaccines in an hour and use all that they had available is incredible. There will be more available tomorrow, and you know, this is a good thing. But it's not over, you know, the, we have to continue being vigilant, you know. Wear a mask when you're outside of your bubble. Wearing masks saves lives. Do social distancing and avoid group gatherings. It's going to take months, you know, if not a year, to get as many people vaccinated as is possible. But for the first time in this pandemic, so many of us have hoped that there's a light at the end of this tunnel. What we do now matters. So now that that is off my chest, let's talk a little bit more about the last week. We need leaders who will speak truth to power. The simple truth is that like the people have spoken, we live in a nation of laws. The first thing that we agreed to do tonight is to protect and support the Constitution of the United States of America. We've just had an election. We've all been elected to serve. So last week, you know, it's over, it's done. Biden was elected, 306 votes in the Electoral College. That's just fact. It happened. We all need to acknowledge elections nationally and locally. And now is the time to, you know, work together to achieve de-escalation and healing. But de-escalation is not silence. So absolutely, racism is viewed by the American Medical Association as an urgent threat to public health and a serious threat to public health. So all of us in our abilities and as a body need to speak out and say that there is no place for hate in Salem, and we need to do it as a body. So I am so grateful to have, hear the words of my now colleagues who have spoken before me so eloquently, and I think I agree with 100% of everything I've heard so far. And with that, I just again say thank you to Ward III, and I'm here to serve you and now to work on behalf of all of Salem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I too want to welcome the three new council members. You know, it's nice, we finally get, at least on my device, get to look at all nine of us. Well, I get to look at you and me, but... And I, I want to mention that there's one-third new members on this body that makes the decisions for the Salem City. And I look forward to working with all of you. My comments tonight are, I'll put it this way. I was going to make some of these at our last meeting on December 14th, but I didn't. So I'm going to now. This was four weeks ago. I came to the council meeting on December 14th as excited as I've been in my 70 years. Two phenomenal events. Two phenomenal events, historic events. Welcomed events, exciting events happened the week before our council meeting. The first was on Saturday, December 11th, and that was the approval of disseminating the vaccine for the coronavirus. Something that we had been working on, something that councillor Phillips has mentioned. An exciting time, especially for a senior with pre-existing conditions. I was looking forward and am looking forward to the vaccine. I was hoping and excited about having it by spring. The second, and more importantly to me, happened on Monday, December 13th, one day before our council meeting, and it was the meeting of the Electoral College where it was confirmed as the voters had decided that Joseph Biden was the new President of the United States. An exciting, an awarding day. Now, here I am, four weeks later. The dissemination of the vaccine has been disrupted, inconsistent. And again, as a person of age and pre-existing condition, I, I can't wait to get my shot, but I no longer feel as though I'm going to be getting it before spring. But I do have hope, faith that it's coming. The second thing was the events of last Wednesday. As somebody who appreciates the history of the United States, loves this country, there's nothing more disappointing than the actions of criminals who attacked the national headquarters of our government. It was extremely frustrating to see that. It was also frustrating to see the lack of preparation that law enforcement took. If you didn't know that something like that was possible in Washington, D.C. on that day, you should not have been in law enforcement. Even with this disappointment over the last four weeks, I still hold out hope. I hold out hope for the vaccine, and I look forward to the inauguration day next week of Joseph Biden as our next president. We deserve a change, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gonzalez?
Thanks, Mayor, and Jim, I want to be part of that change you mentioned. Thank you for saying that. And I want, first of all, thank my colleagues. I'm looking forward to this. Thank my family, friends, Northeast Salem, Ward Five residents. I'm going to dedicate my term to baby Donovan. And you know, these are the moments, this moment, just want to share this quick story. It reminds me of a point, I can't tell you exactly how old I was, five, six, seven. Not too far from where I'm at, where I am today. We're farmworkers, parents are farmworkers. This wasn't just a summer job. This was our profession, my mom, dad, my brothers and sisters. And it was that early morning, because you get, you had to get there before dawn to set aside the rows you were going to work that day. And it was cold, even though it was summer, the leaves were wet. But there was this nice moment when the sun started to come up. I don't know what it was. It's, it's like the start of a new day. And I knew it was going to be a long day. It's going to be hot. My back was going to hurt, knees were going to hurt. And at the end of the day, I don't know, it was like the best moment. It was just such a great moment. I can't even, I don't feel it very often today. So that's how this feels today. That's how this feels. It feels like it's on a new day. We're all going to work hard. It's not going to be easy, but I'm going to see it through, and that's why I ran, because I love Salem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jose. Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, but the city recorder reminds me that we did not actually vote on the additions and deletions to the agenda, so we need to back up and actually take a vote on that.
If you all are done, we'll do that. How's that? Okay, let's, let's take a vote on additions and deletions. Sorry about that.
Okay, Councillor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson? I'll, I'll come back.
Say aye.
Okay. Councillor Phillips?
Maybe wait for it. Aye.
Councillor Leung?
Aye.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councillor Hoy?
Aye.
Councillor Nordike?
Aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Hoy. Thank you very much. Amy, we appreciate you keeping track and helping us get this job done today. But we still want to hear from our city manager and kind of his comments for the, for the evening. Steve, did you have anything you want to share?
Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of staff, we look forward to working with the 2021 council. A couple of points, if I may. Under information reports, I did ask, and thank you for adding it to your agenda. I did ask for a presentation by Chief Womack on our approach to protests and demonstrations. Ian, I thought we might be able to do it under these comments, but we realize it really requires more time for him as well as you to ask questions that you might have, including questions regarding upcoming events. We will be reopening the library curbside service. We will be doing so in a way that's safe, that's consistent with the COVID protocol, so it will be slightly modified. We'll have to reduce the number of hours that the curbside is available, but we will be resuming curbside service January 19th. In addition, we'll continue our, our robust online offerings, including a virtual, virtual desks available 45 hours per week. As has been mentioned a couple of times already, the city is assisting Salem Health with their vaccine clinics and, and their model is one that I think can be replicated statewide. It's scalable. As vaccines become available, they'll be pushing those vaccines out to broader groups than the current group, which is essential workers, first responders, healthcare workers. Separately from Salem Health's efforts to vaccinate Oregonians, and I've been told they've vaccinated close to 8,000 Oregonians already. In addition, we receive, the city receives vaccines from Marion County Public Health for our first responders, police, fire, and we're also vaccinating our 911 employees. We vaccinated fire department employees last week, police are going this week, and WBCC will be, excuse me, next week. And we're using our employee health clinic as, as the distribution site for those vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you. Move along then. Don't have any proclamations. We do have a presentation, and give me just a second to pull it up here. I really want to acknowledge that just recently and for the first time, Salem's Public Works Department has been awarded full accreditation by the American Public Works Association. With this award, the city of Salem became the 161st agency in North America and the fourth agency in Oregon to receive this designation. The cities of Eugene Beaverton and West Lynn have also been accredited in Oregon. And to further describe this achievement, let me introduce Dan Hartman. He's the Region Nine Director for the American Public Works Association and the Public Works Director for Golden, Colorado. Mr. Hartman, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. You want to go ahead and just let folks know what this is all about? And we're real proud of our public works folks anyway, so you're just going to add to the luster they have already here.
Well, thank you. We'll be preaching to the choir.
You will be, I think.
Let me first by offering my congratulations to both the new and the existing council members. Having worked in public works in a public agency for nearly 40 years, I truly admire the people who run for office and work on behalf of their counties or their communities that is truly the backbone of this country. And so let me first start by congratulate you all, especially the new members. As the mayor stated, this is a significant honor. The 161st community in North America to receive this distinction. And I, I want to say that the distinction is important because what it says is your public works agency is committed to excellence. You're looking at doing your job good and better tomorrow, and that mindset is, is very, very important. Let me say that Public Works is perhaps the unseen first responders, but more often than not, if, and, and council member, well, I'm not sure, talked about your water supply, and yes. And, and the importance of that, and if you think about a community that would not have a safe and reliable water supply, that is, that is a very bad thing. And so when you look at first responders, it's the people that go out and fix a water break. It's the people that do solid waste sanitation. It's your street department that if there is a a problem before your police, fire, or other people can respond, your streets have to be cleared, they have to be able for these other responders to get there. And they tend to be the unsung first responders, but they're there and they're usually there first. And if it's truly a problem, they're usually there last, cleaning up after. So your public works department and its commitment to excellence is totally admirable, and I, I, it, it really is a true honor. It's ironic that in about 45 minutes, I will be attending the Eugene, Oregon public, or city council meeting to congratulate them for their re-accreditation. So Oregon could be proud of the commitment to excellence. So on behalf of the American Public Works Association, our 30,000 members and communities all over the country and Canada, and actually Australia. But I, it is my joy to congratulate Salem, Oregon, and their public works department. This is truly an honor. Normally, as my duties as director, I would be able to be there with all of you, but at least I'm glad to be able to be there this way. So congratulations, very well done, and be happy that you have a department that has put themselves up, put themselves through the accreditation process to make themselves better, and that, that will serve you all very, very well. So thank you. It is, it is really my privilege to be here tonight.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Hartman. And of course, if we're going to talk public works, we'd love to hear from our public works director, Peter Fernandez. Congratulations, Peter, to you and your staff. This is really a tremendous honor for the city and, and I know for you all in that department.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the support that the council has given us for, for years, not just on policy work and project work, but certainly with rate work. So that is always appreciated. I want to do a special shout-out to our wastewater treatment division manager, Juay Chao, and Heather Dimkey, who both led the effort. And this was a two-year effort in getting all of our practices and all of our policies reviewed, updated. The entire staff worked on this, but they led the effort, and I really appreciate all the support again. And we look forward to continuing to improve and continue to serve the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Fernandez. This is the kind of thing, you know, that we'll talk about a lot of other issues, but this is the kind of thing that when we turn on that tap water, flush that toilet or anything else, it really is fundamental, I think, as councillor Nordike pointed out. And the good work you all do is, is really tremendous. So thank you very much. And we know there's challenges this year and look forward to... And we know there's challenges this year and look forward to how that all is handled. Okay. Public comment. You have three minutes. At three, if you watch, you'll see a one minute go up. And I would appreciate if you at three minutes stop. And if you don't, I'll ask you to stop and we'll turn off your mic. That really slows things down for you. So Rick Stuckey, you've been down this road. Why don't you start it off?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Rick Stuckey. I'm a former city councillor for Ward Five, and I currently reside in Ward Two. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to the new councillors and to the mayor and current councillors who were sworn in this evening. As a former city councillor, I know that the work you put in is is a lot of time consuming. So I thank you for your effort and also thank you to your families because they make sacrifices as well on behalf of your service to the community. I wanted to speak tonight on Mayor Bennett's motion five A. I had some texts prepared, but after hearing tonight, I'm going to, in hopes of making your meeting at least maybe a minute and a half shorter, I'm just going to say, I I was going to say I was in support of the mayor's motion, but it did not go far enough. But I am very pleased to what I heard tonight from the, from your councillors, that it looks like there's going to be a a motion to make a very strong statement about support, about condemning white supremacy and hate in Salem. So all I'm going to say is I support that wholeheartedly, and I appreciate the leadership you're taking on on this at this time. So thanks again for your service and again, congratulations to all you new folks.
Great, Rick, thank you very much.
You bet.
Julianne Jackson?
Hello. So to be really honest, I'm going to try not to, not to get emotional. To be, to be really honest, I've heard the words white supremacy more in this meeting than I have in six months of meeting with city and state officials all summer long. And to to even have my experience acknowledged is making me really, really emotional. So I would like, like to say thank you to the city councillors that have come on that have, that are taking a strong stance on this. Moving forward, this denouncement is a start to where we unravel the history of white supremacy in Salem and become an example for the rest of our state on how to, how to do this work. You know, folks, and I'm just going to call them out here, folks like Tim Davis, Vincent Burrows, Kyle Brewster, Alani Love, Megan Marie Stevens, Joey Gibson, Corey Wyatt, known white supremists. You know, groups like Proud Boys, Patriot Prayer, Three Percenters, American Patriot Society, all summer long. Your BIPOC community has been struggling. We have been physically assaulted. We have been accosted in public places. We have been called names that are just unacceptable. We have been scared. We have been begging and we have been asking for relief. And, you know, white supremacy and white nationalism is a stain on our democracy. It's a thief of our progress, and we cannot allow the city of Salem to continue to remain in the state that it's in. The trauma to your BIPOC community members has been largely ignored. The time for talking is is really over. We've been talking about this denouncement, and inaction has allowed a foothold to take, to take root in our community, and it has been truly disparaging to relive this over and over and over again. So I would ask that city council not only approve the resolution to denounce, but that we also declare racism a public health crisis in our city, that we begin the process with the Human Rights Commission, keeping in mind that you have BIPOC community members and business owners who are the experts on racism. We don't, you know, as 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 the government, you don't get to tell black people when enough is enough. You don't get to tell people of color when enough damage is enough. And I am telling you, as a, as a black woman in this community, I have had enough. Further, I call on City Manager Steve Powers to not only denounce this, but to complete, to create a comprehensive campaign to denounce this as well citywide. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Julianne. Evan White?
Sorry.
Folks, I'm sorry.
Forgive my ignorance. Are we allowed to ask a question?
Yes, I'm sorry if you have questions. Julianne, are you still there?
I am.
Okay.
The question is, I know what the term is, but I, as a person who works with nothing but acronyms at work, could you explain to our community, what is BIPOC?
Yeah, black, black folks and other, other people of color. So anyone who is not white, essentially.
Yeah, exactly. My understanding is it stands for black, indigenous, and persons of color. And the historical reason for that is because frequently, black and indigenous are specifically neglected when you just call a person of color.
Correct.
Okay. Anything more, Trevor? Okay. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you very much. And Julianne, thank you very much for coming down and for what you have done in the past six months. And I hope you received the email I sent to you when you sent one to us. And the motion that I will be proposing does talk about first Americans as well as other people of color. So we recognize that we're, we're here on land that really wasn't ours till white people came and took it from somebody else. So thanks for the work you're doing, and I hope this, what we do here tonight is a, is a good start.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Julianne. Evan White?
Good evening. I am Evan White, speaking for the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association on Agenda Item Six A, the proposed Candelaria Fairmont Trail. My written remarks filed today and previously explain why we feel this trail is so important. The proposal is for a daylight path, which would be used mostly by folks with cell phones able to report any problems, more eyes on the ground. The gates would be locked at night, as is the current practice. Solar-powered lights and security cameras could be added if need be. The first thing needed is a gate somewhere along the northern fence. The cost of this gate professionally installed has been estimated to be about five thousand dollars, including an earthen ramp, which would account for the two-foot elevation distance difference. There would be additional costs for a gravel path leading up to the ramp. My colleague, Bill Davis, has filed remarks saying why we feel a gravel path would be not only much cheaper, but also ADA compliant. It is also perhaps more consistent with the historical nature of Pioneer Cemetery. The city can get a good price on gravel, and we can find volunteers willing to distribute the gravel. If the storage area at Pioneer cannot be moved, then the path could simply go around it. Excavation should be avoided in order not to trigger archaeological expense. A little more gravel would be laid for the path leading up to the existing gravel road, which is perfectly adequate for biking and walking. We're not seeing any need to pave the path through the cemetery. An iron fence would improve appearance, but is not needed at this time. Just saying no to the path is not responsible public policy. Why force people to make a one-mile detour? Let's take a simple and low-cost step to improve the quality of life for many residents and also reduce deaths from pedestrian deaths from traffic. Please, let's move forward with the city's transportation plan, which calls for a HOIC rural pedestrian bike and bike trail, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Evan. Is there anyone have questions? Yes, Councilor Nordike?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. White, can you tell me, you're speaking on behalf of your neighborhood association, is that right?
That's correct.
And what are some of the, the, the comments from your neighborhood association? How do they feel about the prospect of having this path?
Well, it's a great way to move downtown on a network of little leafy streets that go from our neighborhood towards downtown while avoiding Liberty, which is, has no bike lanes, has narrow sidewalks planted with mailboxes, which regularly get whacked by traffic. And, you know, it's both unsafe and not very pleasant.
Hey. Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Evan. Dylan McDowell, Dylan, you are scheduled to, to give the presentation later on, under information reports on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Would you like to wait till then, or do you want to just take your time now?
I'd love to just take a minute now, if that's all right. I only have a few, three minutes or so, it's just fine, I think.
Sure, it's your call.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillors, and wonderful to meet all of the new councillors. My name is Dylan McDowell, and I'm Chair of the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. As the SCRAB chair does every year, I'm here just to give a brief update of our activities. Hopefully, you received our annual report and had a chance to review that. And I got at least one question. So if any of you have other questions, please email those to me or ask them tonight. As you know, COVID has presented a lot of challenges over the last year, especially for parks and rec and activities. But I think it's made all of us really appreciate the parks and the public spaces we have in our community here in Salem. I know I've really been using them a lot, took throughout all of your wards, and I'm really excited to see what we have for the year ahead. A few points in the annual report I want to highlight. The biggest one is we had a lot of activity with master plans over the last year. So as you probably know, master plans come through SCRAB first, and we usually hold a hearing to go through those and hear from the public, and we approve those to recommend to council. There's many more underway. There's been letters of support for lots of grants to support new infrastructure in our city and with some big, exciting results. And we've also collaborated with a lot of partners, including Salem Parks Foundation, Mission Street Parks Conservancy, Friends of Trees, and others. We've had a few letters primarily on homelessness. And as many of you know, we're really eager to continue to be a partner with you as you look for these solutions on parks and unsheltered individuals. And as we look ahead, I want to name two different things we're working on. One is the creation of a new online interface on our website. There can be a fact sheet of sorts around parks information for the city. So for many folks, it's hard to find out how many parks there Salem has, where are the miles of trails? We have a lot of great resources scattered across our city website. So we'll be unveiling this in the next month or so, but it will have one central place for reservation information, statistics, Park Finder map, and everything else. And we're excited that will hopefully get more people using the parks and the resources we offer. And finally, we created a tree subcommittee in twenty nineteen to work on trees on private property and other tree canopy concerns, which I know many of you share from some of your previous conversations. And while that was dormant during twenty twenty, we are excited to start that back up in this coming year. And so hopefully, we'll be back here with some recommendations in the next six to twelve months about how we can increase that, especially in areas like eastern Salem, where we know tree canopy is lacking, and we want to make sure there's equitable distribution. So overall, it's been a really busy year. There's been a lot, and I encourage you to check out the report for the bullet points to find out more. But please reach out if I can ever provide more information, and we look forward to partnering with you. I'm going into twenty twenty-one.
Great, thank you, Dylan. Yeah, very much, thank you. I, the only question I have is, could we have you come back? When you get this website going and give us a five-minute or whatever demonstration of what you've got there and how the public can see it and use it? I, I think that sounds really exciting. I, that kind of aggregated information around that kind of a theme, I think, will make a tremendous difference in people's understanding of their parks, park services, and some of the other recreation opportunities associated with it. So I hope you'll come back.
I'd be happy to, and I want to give kudos to Rob Romanek and Tony Whitler for their work on that and the city staff.
Yeah, they're great. Tommy Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really not for Dylan. Thank you, Dylan, for the good work you're doing. But I will just tell you that I have received some texts from Lori Walker, who's the president of SCAN, who had said she has signed up to talk before two o'clock and hasn't received an invitation. So I'm wondering if somebody in the recorders office or somebody else can see if they can contact Ms. Walker so she can speak.
Unfortunately, she didn't make it by two o'clock. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Here for a minute. I'm having a little trouble getting people wedged in here, so.
Okay.
Well, blame me if she doesn't get on, okay?
Okay, thanks, I'm just.
You bet. I apologize if she doesn't. Lori Doherty? I see you. Thank you, Dylan, very much. There you are, Lori.
Hi, hello, Mr. Mayor and city councillors. Thank you, my name, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can't see you very well. Lower your screen a little bit, then we can see you.
Anyway, my name is Lori Doherty, and I live in Ward One. And I want to congratulate the new city councillors. And because I live in Ward One, I really appreciated Virginia Stapleton's comments and I talking about the history of this country, because I want to speak to the measure, mayor's measure five A, because I agree with people, this needs to be much stronger. We need to take a very strong stance against white supremacy. It is like the foundation of our country, the foundation of our state. It keeps coming back, and every time it comes back, it's vicious, it's violent, and we need to stop it. And, you know, I appreciate what Virginia Stapleton and other councillors have said, and I hope to see that this will be carried forward tonight, that there will be a very strong resolution against white supremacy and racism in Salem. Thank you.
You're in luck, Doherty. Your wish is our command. Your, Councilor Anderson is going to help us out to make this as, as complete a statement as possible with as sustainable a package of activities to make this actually be more than just a virtue signal from the city council, that it has a lot more going on in it, and we can accomplish some of the, the objectives we've heard over the past few months.
Thank you.
Jonathan Jones?
Yeah, so Jonathan Jones, Ward One, got quite a bit to say here, so I'm just going to jump into it and speak kind of fast. A lot of folks today said a lot of things addressing a lot of different aspects of this dire problem that we all face, which is not a problem of protesters. To call these people protesters is an insult to our constitution and to the proud history of citizens mobilizing to enact positive forward change. The problem is of fascists. The problem is of racism. The problem is of white supremacy. It is a problem that you, Chuck, told me that you just didn't see. When I spoke to you about the dangers that I and others who share my otherness face, you told me that I was wrong, not in your city, not these cops. And besides, as you said, just look at you. You're the one who calls the cops. We're more than six months beyond that conversation where you labeled me as hostile but couldn't tell me why you felt that way, and in that time, our city has been under siege. Most weekends, armed fascists and white supremacists occupy our capital grounds and roam our streets actively, and I quote, hunting for BLM. These are lynch mobs. The absence of robes and torches does not mean their goal is different. Think about those three words, hunting for BLM, poorly-coated dog whistle for hunting black and brown people. I informed you of this over and over this past year, but you decided to ignore me. You decided to send my book back using taxpayer money via postage in the mail rather than face one of the many people who was telling you that your Pleasantville is and was a facade. I told you that a continued lack of response to these armed racist fascist Trump cultists would result in emboldening and violence. You and the city did nothing when they roamed our city parks and streets drunk and hunting the first time. And so why would they stop? They have found a comfortable haven, a weak immune system to bombard with their infection. And then the first, when myself and a group of friends stood in silence outside of my business, defending ourselves and the people like my wife, working inside, who suddenly had to watch the people they love stand in defense of a threat that this city has done nothing to stop, who thought she might watch her husband die in front of her on the other side of the glass. Known neo-Nazi Eric Olkers was marching with that group of fascists as they goose stepped back down State Street. Weeks before the first, that very same neo-Nazi threatened to assault me, showed me his weapon, told me to leave the city, let me know they were watching me, came back a week later and vandalized my store. And on the first, he was there with that armed mob. I do not need to continue going over what actually happened as there is ample footage, so instead, I will ask you some questions. Of you, Steve, where is the follow-up that was promised in our meeting just before Christmas? How do you explain the lack of charges for the people who maced a five-year-old, which you said has been, and I quote, thoroughly investigated? Of you, Chuck, what exactly do you plan to do about this? Of you, Chuck, what exactly do you plan to do about this? I and others who do not look like you and try to imagine, and it's not that difficult, are not safe. You speak of a diversity problem, but there is no problem with diversity. There's a problem of white supremacy and fascism. So when will you accept that it is?
Sorry, Jonathan, your time's up. Thank you. Okay, Emily Terry.
Hi, I also have a lot to say, so I'm going to talk fast, so please excuse that. Salem City Council, Mary Chad Bennett. My name is Emily, and I live in Ward Seven. I was born and raised here in Salem, and I am proud Mexican-American. I wanted to provide public testimony around Agenda Item Five A. I want to start by saying thank you for some of the amazing words and demand for strong action. What all Salem residents have witnessed unfold in the capital city has been nothing short of astonishing. We have witnessed white supremacy and white nationalist groups coming to into Salem and terrorizing the residents who live here, our Capitol, our city grounds, government officials, and local minority-owned businesses. We have seen many counter protesters of white supremacists be met with violence from the Salem Police Department. I'm sorry, Mary, Mayor Bennett, this is toward you also. Oregon State Police and the National Guard. We have also witnessed the inaction of our city council to take a firm stance against white supremacy and white nationalism coming into Salem, which has done nothing but continue to open the door for their violent and hateful behavior to roam freely and without consequences for far too long. I would like to thank my representative Vanessa Nordick and the few other city council members for speaking up against white supremacy and white nationalist groups coming to Salem. Also, a thank you to Salem Police Chief Trevor Womack for actually saying the words, white supremacy. I almost find it astonishing that many city officials still want to say that they were never aware that these violent groups were coming into Salem. For almost a year, Salem residents have taken the brunt of violent acts of these hate groups with no justice. We have noticed, we have voiced our concerns on several platforms, including but not limited to testimony in city council meetings, school board meetings, emails, peaceful protests, et cetera, yet our voices have continued to be censored. And now you want to, now you're looking to the Humans Rights Commission to provide that voice for us. We do not need a commission to speak on our behalf. What we need is our elected representatives and official to listen to our voices and put, that you are put into office to represent. My first proposed action is that you make a clear and concise statement denouncing white supremacy and all hate groups tied with white supremacy, including but not limited to the Proud Boys, Three Percenters, TAPS, American Wolf, and the Patriot Prayer Group. I would also suggest taking any action against city or government officials who are affiliated or have clear ties to those groups because they are there. My second proposed action for the city of Salem is to handle and treat the white supremacy and white nationalist groups. I just mentioned what the same law enforcement action is All Black Lives Matter and other human rights protesters have faced within the last year. It is truly sad that our city has ignored all of the warnings from residents and only chosen to take action when people in power have their lives at risk. I am hopeful that the city of Salem will be able to listen to their residents moving forward and not require the additional hoops to, for us to jump through to take action as we fear that this violence is only going to continue to escalate. Salem.
Hey, thank you, Emily. Any questions for Emily? Yes, councillor Anderson. Emily, hang on.
Emily, thank you for what you said, and I, I don't think that you know this, but I have introduced a motion that all the councillors have now that will reject and condemn white supremacy and others. So, you know, I know we're not moving as fast as you would like us to move, but, you know, I agree with you, and I'm sure other councillors do too, and thank you very much.
Absolutely, and I look forward to seeing your words being put into action.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, thank you, Emily. Laura Knudsen.
Hello, council members. My name is Laura Knudsen. I have a business in Ward Seven. I'm a family physician in Salem. I've lived here for nearly 10 years and have a small primary care clinic here. I support councillor Long's motion. Racism is absolutely a public health crisis. In the past several months, both nationally and in Salem, we've seen a surge in violence, intimidation, and threats by white supremacists directed at people of color, and in fact, to anyone who disagrees with them. We can choose to respond. I want to live in a community that is safe for everyone. I have seen firsthand and on video the Proud Boys actively searching for people to physically intimidate and attack. In their own words, they have been, quote, going on the hunt, roaming our city streets, looking for the next person they can assault. You saw what their violence, lies, and rhetoric led to at the U.S. Capitol last Wednesday. These are the same people with the same dangerous ideologies and disregard for human life here in our city. Salem can do better than this. Yes, we are a city and a region with deep roots in white supremacy. We are also a community with many people who reject those values and want our town to be a safe home for all its residents, regardless of their race. Please join me in supporting councillor Long's motion as one of many actions needed in our community. Please allow one minute of my time to Kay or Reed for their comments. I suggest you reconsider cutting off BIPOC people this week. Thank you.
Got a minute.
Hello, council. Kay or Reed, Business Ward Seven. I ask your grace to allow just a minute of Laura's time for me. New Year's Day, 2021, on High Street, near its intersection with State, there was no march, no speaking. There was no provocation other than existing, no provocation other than existing. Our community is targeted for infection. On January 1st, there was no march, no speaking, no provocation other than existing. A black-owned business with friends at its door existing and watching. True, it is in our government, and true, it is in our police, our youth, and true, it has been in this green and drip, drip valley since it was claimed for whites only 1844, but I hope it is vestigial. Ten years, Salem, my home, eight years of business of healing, I hope most of you would stand if only you could see. These long rifles knocking on our doors, impudent, and state assured their violence is okay, these flags of fist searching on Lefel, Winter, and Cross. I hope these alarms will move you. Before my brother danced for you and bid you dance with him, before you were criticized for your job and you did not know what apartheid was. Ignorance itself, no crime, but ignorance this to your neighbors whose skin is brown or hair is kinky or love is rainbow to your neighbors targeted for annihilation and expulsion by the violent predators smashing our state houses, stroking guns and spitting violence, hate, violence, hate under my boot. Ignorance of apartheid, Jim Crow, what real lynching looks like, the bulging eyes and the twisted mouth, thank you, Abel. Ignorance of these is danger, but thankfully, your neighbors know. All you need to do is recognize expert surround.
Thank you very much.
Can we have Kay just?
Eric, Eric, what?
Possible have Kay finish that last part.
Kay's not even signed up, as far as I can tell.
Yeah, you can talk to the Kathy about it.
Yeah, I, we're done.
Kay has three minutes.
No, actually not. We don't have a name here. I, frankly, I was just told that this wasn't a, a person who'd signed up, so.
Yeah, I'm signed up. I, Kay Reed with Kathy Up, Upstrigger, we, we, we had an email about this. We said that we were going to be on the same screen.
She is, he, uh, he has signed up as, as Kay.
Yeah. And she, and Kathy told me that I was going to go right after Laura.
Ah, okay. Fine with me. Go, let's give you another minute, and then we'll be done, okay?
Three, three minutes.
Three, three minutes.
You've had your three. Let's go. Go ahead.
Ignorance of this, to your neighbors whose skin is brown or hair is kinky or love is rainbow to your neighbors targeted for annihilation and expulsion by the violent predators smashing our state houses, smoking, stroking guns, spinning violence, hate, violence, hate under my boot. Ignorance of these, danger, but thankfully, your neighbors know. We live this danger. Our parents lived it, our grandparents lived it, and their parents lived it. Blood on the leaves and stomping of the boot, statehouse windows shatter, we smell blood at the root, blood at the root. No march, no speaking, no provocation other than existing. There was no counter protest. How many times have we been made to learn our existence is counter protest? Jackie knows this. Go back to your country. My education, home state, four times as many group hate groups as Oregon, black family moves to the district and niggers painted on their home, 45-minute bus ride to school sprayed KKK, swastikas in the park, nigger lips, nigger hair, piece of shit, that one's Oregon. Youth encouraged to school in white shirts over black jeans, solidarity with area Nazis. You can say, well, not here, that is not our town, and they said that is not our town until it was. And you can wait until it is, but there is no mystery here. Lovely Steve, Chuck, and council. The town does not have a diversity problem. The problem is white supremacy, hatred, entitled violence, and support from a most extraordinary and criminal indifference. Thank you, James. Multiple families with beautiful brown children have left Salem and will not visit downtown. A kind-hearted, incisive young black man left Salem this year because he did not feel safe. A loss for us. He returned to my education, finding it preferable. And the indifference here was too great, and so I asked myself, where am I? What is this place? Why am I here? And I know these are the questions the infection wants me to ask. I know there are some listening to this who cheer the questions, who hasten the infection, but I'm asking this community, you electeds, who are we? What is this place? Why are we here?
Hey, I'm sorry, your time's up, man. Okay. We'll move on to Eric Knudsen. Eric?
Yes. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Eric Knudsen. I am a retired police officer and Award III Salem resident. Growing up as a youth, I had blinders on, and only later in my life did I start to get an understanding of how traumatic life can be for a person of color in our society, particularly those who are indigenous or black. I was in high school when the last Oregon town eliminated their sunset law, a fact that I did not know until well into adulthood. Recent events have helped me to understand how valuable it is for me personally to educate myself about racism that I was unable to see in my younger years and to some extent even into my 60s. It is helping me to see how I can be useful to my community as well as my ability to be compassionate and supportive of people I care for. I want to play a part in the unification and maturing of our society. Over the last 200 years, much progress has been made, but as you have said tonight, much work remains. It now seems clear that the increased visibility and volume of white supremacy has shed light on what has been present all along. I hope to see in the coming months and years our community banding together to dismantle racism. I want to express my gratitude to the motion makers, the motion, as well as the amendment, all those who have testified this evening in support. I have great appreciation for all the people in our community who have been making legal and peaceful efforts to stand up for the safety of everyone. Are we on the verge of taking a step forward in maturity as a nation and as individuals? I relish the prospect of seeing this crisis be transformed and revealed as a healing crisis. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Any questions?
Mayor Bennett, I actually have a question, more of a logistical thing, if that's okay.
You have a question for Mr. Knudsen?
Not for Mr. Knudsen.
Okay.
Thank you.
What's your question?
So my question is, because we are hearing a lot specifically from our black indigenous and communities of color, there is a lot of hurt and there's a lot of anger that's going on and a lot of fear, like real fear that's happening. And I understand we are supposed to follow the protocol, three minutes per person.
Correct. That is absolutely correct, Jackie.
Give them an extra minute to finish what they need to say.
I, I'm sorry. We've got, we set it up. Everybody gets three minutes, and, and that's what the timing's all about. It's to try to move through this stuff, so I appreciate your thoughts. If you want to come to the council rules committee and change that. So BIPOC, folks get more time, that's fine, but you're going to have to come to the council rules committee to do it. Okay? Corey Poole.
Hello, everybody. As actually as a neighborhood association chair, if you can actually get up to five minutes as I get today. One of the benefits of being a neighborhood association chair, so encourage everyone to go.
Excuse me, Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That's, that's correct. If it's a public hearing, but not for regular public comment periods. You get three minutes, just like everyone else.
Oh, then I better hurry. All right.
Okay.
Let's start his clock again.
Oh, jeez. Okay, I've got to share my screen. Sorry about that. We're all learning here. All right. It's not going. There we go. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councillors. My name is Corey Poole. I'm the Chair of the Semken Neighborhood Association and a business owner on Turner Road. What a year it has been. I don't think many people would be interested in repeating the last eight months, but in the Semken neighborhood, we've had an additional stress of watching our neighborhood park get taken over by homeless campers and then have those camps be destroyed by flooding and fire. On December 20th, we saw Mill Creek rise quickly as it does almost every winter, flooding out the majority of the homeless camps along the creek and the park. The devastation was horrendous, and the impacts on the homeless and the neighborhood are still being felt. On January 5th, a similar situation played out in Wallace Marine Park as the Lamont River flooded out the majority of the homeless camps in that park as well. I hope everyone can now agree that this experiment in unmanaged city park camping has not worked ever very well for anyone. So what do we do now? I've worked during these last months to learn more about the problem of homelessness, and I've gained a deep respect for the people and organizations that work hard to find real solutions to this problem. If there's one concept that comes through across the board, I'd say it's that we need to think big. Despite what some may think, these people have not been bussed in from Portland, they have not been sent here from other states. Most of them have lived in Salem for years or decades. The causes of their homelessness are varied, and the solutions need to be equally varied. While I feel strongly that the real long-term solution for homelessness would be a dramatic increase in affordable housing, I know that is not achievable within a reasonable timeframe, so we will be forced to implement short-term housing options. Safe and secure micro villages might be one of the best tools at our disposal that we can use to address this pressing need. While these villages are not free, they might offer the lowest cost and highest benefit option to get people out of the cold and into secure shelter where they can get a fresh start. As you can see from these examples, these villages don't need to be a visual blight, and by placing them, these facilities in every part of Salem and keeping the number of units small, the impact on surrounding neighborhoods can be minimal. Dignity Village in Portland has 43 micro homes and has operated for 20 years. It has a yearly operating budget of only $28,000. Salem also has other housing tools that could be implemented. Council could incentivize more affordable housing options by reducing fees, cutting red tape, and removing restrictions such as parking requirements and road improvements. Any vacant parking lot in Salem could be quickly converted into an RV park, and many Salem residents could host an ADU in their backyard if the city made it easier to do so. Whatever you do, please do it quickly. The situation in our city parks remains dire, and six months is far too long for our parks to endure. The.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey. Any questions for Corey? Yes, Jim.
Thanks, Mr. Poole, for coming down again. I'm familiar with the situation in Wallace Marine Park with the flooding, but not so much with Cascade Gateway Park. So when the flood happened, where did the campers go?
Immediately after, the campers, although some of them were warned ahead of time, very few of them actually moved until the water was literally lapping at their heels in Cascade Gateway Park. They moved out many in the middle of the night and moved just onto the higher grounds surrounding the creek bank along between Walmart and Lowe's and some other higher ground options. This was not a huge flood. It was more of a routine flood. It's just unfortunate that most of the camps happen to be in the low-lying areas along the creek. The Mid Valley Community Alliance, Homeless Alliance, found funding for hotels for many of them. Many of them got a week of hotel vouchers and used them. Now, many of them have returned to the park and are in many of the areas of the park that are actually off limits to them in the disc golf course, parking area, near the dog park. And I understand that the city staff is working to try to address those situations. So it's, it's not a good scene, as you well know. But, you know, it's, for these people, every day is a crisis, so I don't know how much this impacted them more than just the getting day-to-day life done as, as they always do.
I, I hate to, I hate to put the next question this way. It's either or. Now that the campers have been moved away from the creek, would it be better when the water goes down to have them go back? Or would it be better to have them be where they are now and save the creek?
Given, given that, in my opinion, given that the creek is state-protected riparian zone, I don't think people should have ever been there. The damage to the wildlife habitat along the creek has been permanently altered, bank erosion, all kinds of stuff, you know, it's a disaster. So no, I don't think anyone should go back by the creek. There are some higher areas of the park that have been identified, and I believe campers are being instructed to move to those areas temporarily as long as the six. So no, I don't think anyone should go back by the creek. There are some higher areas of the park that have been identified and I believe campers are being instructed to move to those areas temporarily as long as the six-month period remains. But as I pointed out in my statement, I don't think six months is doable even. I think this needs to happen quickly. You know, the, the neighborhood of Semka has suffered, the park has suffered. It's time to, it's time to get moving and to get, get on to some other solutions.
Thanks, Corey.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Poole, thank you again for leading me on a tour of the homeless encampments at Cascade Gateway Park this past Sunday. I very much appreciate it. I want to go back to your slide. You had a slide talking about $28,000 and I'd like to take a closer look at that. Can you put that slide back up, please?
I think, I think I can. Bear with me for just a moment.
No problem.
Okay, I'm screen sharing. Where's my slideshow? There it is. Again, sorry. I believe this is the one. How do I make it big?
Double click it, see what happens.
I did. It didn't work. From current slide, here we go. And that, this is pulled from a 2017 article I found. It's actually hard to find operating costs for these facilities. A lot of them don't appear readily. But I was able to find an article and, and ask around and get a few of them anyways.
Dwarf the initial set of costs in the long run. So I'd like to find as many cost-effective solutions as possible. So that's why I'm particularly interested in that. And the other question I had was, as you, as you know, I mentioned the fact that the Multnomah County Commissioners use their federal CARES Act funding to buy a vacant pharmacy and a 59-room motel along with other money in order to help reduce the homelessness problem here in, in Multnomah County. And I just want to highlight that because, you know, all the counties have access to federal funding to help close the gap when it comes to homelessness services. And I was very intrigued to see the newspaper, the news article from Multnomah County using 2.5 million of federal funds from the federal CARES Act in order to help facilitate and take a bite out of some of those costs. So I just wanted to tag that for future reference. It sure would be nice to see more efforts like that, but as we all know, there's also the cost of operations for facilities like that. So I just want to flag that for future interest. Thank you.
This one is surprisingly low. I think I only found one other, like I think it was in Wisconsin that was close to this. Most of them are more like $50,000 a year or more. Yeah.
Right.
Hey, very good. Oh, yes, Counselor Phillips?
So thank you, Mr. Poole, for coming tonight and drawing our attention to this. We're kind of our eyes and ears for the last few months. So do you, in your opinion, have a sense of why people were there so close to the water in the first place?
You know, I hate to put it so bluntly, but the water is your kitchen, the water is your clothes washing, and the water is your bathroom. Almost none of these people use the porta-potties that are there. I mean, it's, that's cut and dry what the situation is.
I guess my, my follow-up question would be more for city staff. It's just, you know, like I, I remember camping a long time ago on the Appalachian Trail when I was in medical school and then in high school as, as an Eagle Scout. Nobody wants to move their camp in the middle of the night, but that happens when you, the water rises. So, you know, it's gonna take a creative solution to figure out how to encourage people to, to do the thing that's a little harder in terms of work. I mean, being homeless is incredibly stressful.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Thank you, Corey, very much. Clifford Eifler Rodriguez.
Hello, my name is Clifford Eifler Rodriguez, Ward Six. Just making sure you can hear me.
Yes.
Yep. I'm encouraged a little by the earlier talk of a resolution today and hopefully we'll, we'll see that. I did want to, I think Counselor Anderson had mentioned that the rock comes from up top. And while certainly there's a lot of politics that have enabled an acceleration of what, what we see here on the ground in Salem. These are our neighbors. These are our community members who are doing this. These are people in surrounding communities who have focused on Salem being a place that is, for, for a lack of a better term, free and clear to, to operate and, 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 and bring hate into our community. And, I mean, the fact of the matter is, is hate is a real thing that exists and is driving people away, as Kate mentioned, to move away from here, closing businesses. So the balance of my, my remarks are gonna be focused on, to Mayor Bennett specifically. Mayor, I know that in your position, you are a volunteer. You serve functionally as another city councillor. You know, functionally, Steve Powers does, does the work. But you have an important responsibility as the figurehead, as the mayor, which you were sworn in today for four more years to be out in front of this.
For two more years. Don't, don't add more to this.
Two, two, four, whatever it may be.
Trust me, two.
You, you, it's your job. This is your one job is to be the figurehead of the city, to be the one who takes the lead and denounces white supremacy. It's, it's easy as that. I don't believe in white supremacy. I don't want it in Salem. I will seek every avenue to stop it. You, you and I have had conversations, you've had conversations with many community members like Jonathan. And the fact is, is what I see is I understand that you may have take issue with what other people are conveying to you. But this is the reality. What Jonathan spoke of, being in front of his business and being afraid that he would be murdered in front of his wife. That's a stunning statement coming from a business owner, from a community leader. And you have been asked repeatedly this year to just say hate, to denounce it. The closest we got to that was last month when the city did release a press release.
Thank you, Clifford. Gina Knudsen?
Gina has withdrawn her desire to comment.
Okay, Heath Kowalski?
Hello, my name's Heath Kowalski. I live in Hood River, Oregon. Frankly, right now, I'm feeling a lot of anger at Chuck Bennett really exemplifying the underlying white supremacy that is being named. Yeah, I just want to bring to the surface how you're policing and silencing voices of color and the visible softening you give when a white man is speaking. So I surely hope the council members will bring that into this conversation as well. I'm speaking tonight because individuals I care for deeply continue to be targets of hate-driven racist acts in this city. And Salem continues to be a hotspot for racist activity by alt-right, white supremacy hate groups, notably the Proud Boys. Their actions and the non-actions of this city have my friends seriously considering moving their lives and their families so that you can simply walk downtown or be in a city park or run their business without fearing for their lives. As a white person in this culture, I continue to be shocked at how my privilege can be used to turn away from the truly terrifying reality of racism and oppression in this country and in my own communities. I do not know the specific identities of the council members. However, I'm making assumptions from what I see that most of you are white. I hear you all acknowledging white supremacy and racism, and I would like you to also acknowledge what extremes had to occur for these public statements to occur, that this is the everyday reality for people of color. For those of you who are white, I beg of you to acknowledge the unconscious ways you and I have been in culture to not see, to ignore, to turn away and to uphold these toxic systems. I ask you to hear your neighbors, your community members, when they are telling you all the ways white supremacy is very much interwoven throughout and alive in your city. You have made strong statements against racism and hate in your city. Now what actions will you actually take to ensure folks of color who call Salem home feel heard, supported and protected? What message will this state capitol send at this crucial time in history? And how will you hold your own mayor accountable? I urge you, I plead of you for the safety of folks I love, for some glimmer of hope for humanity, to please listen, please look, please humbly be guided and led by the people of color who know where the sickness lies, who know where the changes need to happen. Please open yourself to feel the fear and terror your community members are facing and then take action again and again. Please back your words of condemnation. Your, use your power, your voices, your actions as local government to make it clear to the Proud Boys, to these hate groups, they are not welcome and their violence will not be tolerated. This is not going away. They have always been here and they are only getting louder. Will you act now or will you wait until there's more blood on our hands as complicit bystanders? Will you make the same bold statements and take the same bold actions that some of you just made toward Mike Neiman in the name of protection for police and legislators and the name of protection for black families and individuals and for all BIPOC folks in your family? And will you apologize to how freaking rude you were to BIPOC folks who are having to put their life on the line?
Your time's up. I'm sorry, I'm gonna be rude again. I apologize. Okay. We'll move on then to the consent calendar. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
Second.
By Lewis. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. We have item 3.1A, the December 14th, 2020 draft city council minutes. 3.2A, dedication of city property as public right of way along Park Avenue Northeast between D Street Northeast and Tess Avenue Northeast. Item 3.2B, an amendment to the park transportation and wastewater system development charges eligible projects list. And item 3.3A, an addendum to the purchase and sale agreement with the, with Tim Bush for three acres at the Salem Business Campus. That concludes.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah, sorry, I'm Amira Stanley. I was emailed to speak tonight.
Yeah, you get to, I'm, Amira, you're, you're speaking later on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, you, you didn't sign up for a specific item on the agenda, so that portion, public comment for issues not on the agenda, come a little further into the agenda, okay?
Oh, I see.
I'll call on you when we hit you.
My, my agenda is about things that have already been talked about. Is that gonna matter?
No, you can talk about anything you want under that section. We'll be back. Okay. Any, any further discussion? Okay, if the recorder and police caller roll.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi, I'm sorry, my spacebar isn't working to mute.
No, no problem. Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. We don't have any public hearings, so we'll go to special orders of business. 5A is a motion from me and I'll also be recognizing Counselor Anderson. Counselor Anderson, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead with my motion and then I'll call on you. I move the city council request to report from the Human Rights Commission on actions the shit city I should take to promote diversity as a core strength of our community and that ensures everyone, regardless of culture, race or ability, can thrive in safety and dignity.
Second.
Second by Lewis. I want to just give you a quick, a couple of thoughts on this because I think it's, it's, it's more of an addendum almost to what Counselor Anderson's gonna propose. I just got in sooner. What I'm after is something that's sustainable, that we really begin working on, things we heard about tonight, that we work on any kind of conciliatory services, that we work with the human resource, Human Rights Commission, who we've worked with for many years on a whole variety of issues. They've done a great job. They've been asking to be included in these discussions further. And I think that we would find they can offer us some ideas. They can bring in different ideas. That doesn't mean that's the only place to go. That's just a good forum, I think, that is, that is available to us. And I think more than anything, they have in their charter, in their ordinance, the ability to recommend to council action policies and legislation that allows us to move forward in changing some of the policies we may have that are, are really a contrary to the spirit of think where, of where all of us are, which is a deep concern about white supremacy, a deep concern about systemic racism. And that we also are concerned about division in our community being generated by anyone trying to foster issues of division. I, I think it just gives us an opportunity to really work our way through this. And I'm not thinking of this taking several months. I think this can be done fairly quickly. We can start working with some legislation and some ordinances right away. Counselor Leung brought up one, perhaps we should be looking at a special time limit for BIPOC folks who want to come testify that they need more time or that we need to actually lengthen it for everybody a little bit. Those are the kinds of things I think we can be working on. So I, I think we need to be able to take action on a variety of issues, including one that is really, has been bothering me for some time, and that's the lack of permits for anyone to demonstrate in this community that the need to have some sort of contact between the city and folks who want to bring together large groups of people into the community and what the kind of expectation is, whether they're gonna be marching. I'm, I'm very concerned about what's going on up on Fairmont Hills. So that's, that's my thoughts on this. And then I also want to express support for the addition or the amendment that Counselor Anderson will be adding to this. I think it, it needs a strong statement of council and the city regarding racism, white supremacy, the however this is defined. But this needs to be stated, I think broadly by the council. So I hope you'll take a look at this as a package. I think it's, it's worth having both the immediate sort of signal as to where this city is, but also that we get to work on doing the kinds of changes in our own practices at the city that don't, that are not resolving kinds of complications people describe, I think, when they come to council and talk to us or the folks that send emails, you know, who are who post on Facebook or some of the rest of it. I think those kinds of things need to be addressed. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna offer an amendment and if it gets a second, I'll do more explanation of it. But I move to amend the mayor's motion to include a statement against institutional racism and white supremacy as delineated in an email that the city manager sent all councilors oh, about five o'clock. I'll make that motion, then I'll explain it if I get a second.
Second.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know who seconded. Who did it?
Hoy did.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the speakers tonight and speakers and what's been going on in the community for several months now, really are crying out for a definite statement from the city council. We have declared ourselves an inclusive city. Individual councilors, probably all of us had various public meetings, have spoken out against white supremacy, against institutional racism. We have offered ourselves, had been diversity, equity and inclusion training. But we haven't really come out with a definitive statement against white supremacy. So I will just, there's a bunch of whereas's in this and I'm not gonna read them all, but it defines white supremacy as belief that the white race is inherently superior to other races and that white people should have control over people of other races. The social, and the social, economic and political systems that collectively enable white people to main power, maintain power over people of other races. That's the definition. Then the council says, the, the, we resolve to take action and commit to take action, to be a city that welcomes every person regardless of their race, et cetera, et cetera, and that we condemn and repudiates the belief system of white supremacy and racism and are committed and are committed to the elimination of all forms of racism everywhere it exists, including institutional relates, uh, institutional racism. There's other parts of that, but that's the core of it. And, uh, you know, the speakers are right, uh, uh, we need to come out strongly and condemn this. And once the council has done this, then it'll make the work of the Human Rights Commission that the mayor is proposing easier. It will make the, uh, um, uh, the work, uh, with respect to Counselor Leung's motion that'll be next, declaring, uh, racism as a, a public health crisis. It, it'll all be part of a package, but it starts with, um, uh, condemning, uh, um, white supremacy and institutional racism. And I would hope that this would be published and disseminated as broadly by the city, uh, um, in all aspects of media as, as it can after we pass this.
Very good. Counselor Lewis.
I'm not, I'm not sure how to bring this up, but, um, I guess I've got a question for Counselor Anderson, uh, and his amendment. Let me put it this way. I agree with everyone. There is no room for hatred, racism, or white supremacy in the city of Salem or any city. But my concern about what I've, what I hear, especially tonight, not especially, but including tonight, and what I see in, in amendments like this is one type of racism, one type of hatred being pointed out and demanded to have something done against. But it's not the only type of hatred that I've witnessed and observed over the last nine months here in Salem. Especially my hometown, Portland, and in the United States. So, I, I'm not sure how to address that or how to have that explained to me. I, I came up with, um, you know, a statement against hatred, racism, including but not limited to white supremacy. But I, I, I'm struggling to be against one type of hatred and the groups that, that, that do that, like the Proud Boys. But yet we never hear about other types of hatred. And, and I don't know if this is correct or not, but the Antifa groups that have been attacking downtown Portland and the law enforcement for months now. Shouldn't we be, if we're going to, if we're going to specifically identify one type of hatred, shouldn't we be identifying all types of hatred? Shouldn't we be against all hatred? And should we just identify one type?
Well, I've got a bunch of responses to that, Counselor Lewis. The first one is, we sort of had this discussion at, uh, I think it was a council work session a while back with the discussion of are we going to be against racism or are we going to be anti-racist and, uh, uh, Counselor Hoy provided me with a terrific book called How to Be an Anti-Racist that, uh, um, he suggested I send your way after I finish it, which I will be doing. Um, the other thing I would have to say to this is, and I, I, uh, as one of the speakers said, we're pretty much all privileged white people, with the exception to, uh, uh, Counselor Leung and Counselor Gonzalez. We have no idea what 400 years of institutional racism have, have, has done to people of color in our country. And, uh, you know, we just can't understand it, and it, it's to say, we condemn all hatred is, is, uh, should be the same as condemning hatred by one side or the other. You know, the real problem, uh, with our country is not, uh, um, um, the Antifa-type problems, it's the white supremacist problems, and, uh, um, you know, so I guess that's my answer, and we may disagree about that. And, you know, you may wanna, uh, file a motion to substitute, but, you know, that's just where I am on this.
Counselor Leung.
Counselor Lewis, I'm not sure how to answer or respond to what you just said. What I heard you saying, at least from my perspective, is that you're saying all hate matters. In other words, all lives matters. I, I don't know how to, how to respond at, at this time to, to that, and considering that the amount of conversations and the frustration and the hurt and the anger that our community is experiencing. I mean, earlier you had mentioned that, you know, the, the, what was happening at the state Capitol as well as what was happening at the US Capitol. I, 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 I can't right now.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gonzalez had his hand up.
Counselor Lewis, I saw Lewis. I'll call, I'll call him in a second, Counselor Gonzalez. Thank you, Counselor Nordike, for your attention. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, a, a, and, and Counselor Leung, I think there's more agreement than there is disagreement. But my concern is that are we are we, are we leaving out aspects that we should be addressing? And addressing just one aspect. I, I'm not, I, I'm not a wordologist. I don't really have the words to explain the feeling. But I am, I, I, I am against hatred of any kind. And I, I feel as though we are taking out one aspect and, and then, and in doing that, excluding other parts, other aspects of hatred that we should be addressing also. Um. I don't know how else to express it.
Counselor Gonzalez.
You know, I, um, um, I think one of the things, uh, Jim, that you could, um, one of the ways to look at it is the hate coming my way is based on something I can't control. Based on my name. Based on, uh, assumptions that people have of where my family comes from or what they believe I believe. You know, so I think that's why in this case, it should be very specific. But I, I also understand that we have to, and my position here will always to be to de-escalate issues, to de-escalate, to bring down this level of, of negative energy. Because at the end of the day, what that's gonna cause, regardless of who's right or wrong, is gonna cause, it's actually gonna put my family and myself, our lives in danger. You know, so I'm always, I understand what you're saying, cuz I think in general, we have to de-escalate. You know, but this specifically is because it's things we can't control.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Counsel. I think that's a really, a really good description, Jim, the this is, this is specific because the issue before us is very, is actually quite specific. It is white supremacy, it is racism. Uh, the kind of hatred you're talking about, that broader issue of hatred and anger and frustration and all of that. That, that can be dealt with at another time. This one, this is the issue of today. And that doesn't mean we can't take up other issues at a future date, but we haven't had them hit the kind of a genuine concern we're hearing about, uh, on a daily basis in this particular area. I think it, we don't solve all problems at any time. We don't solve all problems anytime on any issue, and this one is really getting to heart of this issue for, uh, I think, really what Counselor Gonzalez is describing. Counselor Leung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. One thing I want to remind folks is that the conversations that we've had earlier, especially during the public comments, we had a black man, Jonathan Jones, who is the owner of Epilogue, who had shared what his frustrations were before he ran out of time to share what was going on, what he experienced, not only last week, but it's been ongoing for the past year. We also had heard from Kay, um, Jonathan's sister, as well as from Laura, Dr. Laura, and I believe another individual, that two other individuals who shared what they were experiencing, what they're seeing. We have large number of comments that have come in, not only today, but in the past year, about what's been going on, the hate that we are seeing in the community, the, the actual fears that our black and brown people are experiencing. I've had conversations with people who are telling me that they're afraid. They don't wanna go downtown. We have owner, business owners downtown who are scared. We have business owners who are black, who are brown, who are being targeted. So, in addition to 5A and also hopefully 5B, like, these are items that are of concern to our community that we really need to focus on and to address.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Bennett and my fellow counselors. Um, I, my plan is to emphatically support the amendment, uh, before us. Uh, I think it's, this is the moment, like, now is the time. Um, and this didn't, this isn't new. This is based on a 450-year history. It's like the original sin of our country. And it's, it's, it may feel like it's more distant here in Oregon, but that there's a history there too, and we learned about it, you know, last month with the diversity, equality, and inclusion training that we had, um, in turning, in turn of like the Oregon Lash Laws, and, I mean, this is, this isn't new, and it's up to all of us, especially those of us with the most privilege, to an effect, end our own privilege. So we have to create ladders and mechanisms and make a stand now to make it easier for our community members who've experienced these, these issues to participate and make us a stronger whole. Um, so I, I cannot state enough how, how much I support this, and once again, I would just like to say, as a healthcare provider, you know, we know that there, there's science behind this, you know, it's, it's not a coincidence that this was the year that the American Medical Association publicly acknowledged that this is a quote, urgent public health threat, and that relates to this amendment as well as hopefully the next uh, motion before the body, and it's also a serious public health threat. And we're supposed to, as physicians, support the development of policies to combat racism and its effects and encourage governmental agencies and non-governmental organizations to increase their, their funding and to look into ways to study the epidemiology and risks and to make changes to our policies to undo systemic and structural racism. So, I, I support the motion. Thank you for your time.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, uh, support what Counselor Leung has just said, and also, uh, what Counselor Phillips has said as well. I ended my remarks tonight in the under-counselor comments to urge my colleagues and staff to do everything that we can to help people to understand that Salem, and to make Salem actually safe and welcoming for everyone. And I think this is, uh, the way we have to start that, and, and it not just have it be empty words, but actually be the force behind actions, and I think it's the right thing to do. I think, uh, w- we have to do, I, I support all of the motions on the table and the ones coming before us, the one coming before us, uh, uh, from Counselor Leung. I think these are all really powerful statements. I would like to see them coalesce into a cohesive package, uh, that actually takes us, uh, to some very real action, because the, the people who spoke tonight, they spoke from their hearts, and they, they've shared with us their fears and their concerns, and they are looking to us for leadership, and they're just the ones who were willing to come forward and speak publicly. There are many other voices, uh, as well that share those same concerns, and we owe it to them, we owe it to our community to be leaders. Uh, and as peop, mostly people have privilege, like, uh, others have said. We, we have a duty to, uh, to tear down the institutional racism that we've talked about in the past and that I've specifically talked about. And we have a, a duty to, to lead, and that's what we're being called to with these three motions or, and amendments, and, uh, I fully support them.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nordike.
I wanna support my colleagues on this, and particularly Counselors Leung and Gonzalez on this. Um. Uh, I, I have to say, I was a little bit speechless by some of the comments that I heard earlier. Now is not the time to be claiming both sides. Now is not the time to be making false equivalences. Now is the time to take decisive action. I hope that sometimes when I actually repeat actual events that have happened in the city of Salem, that is, the, the overwhelming evidence that we have of racism happening right now in our city, that that would wash away any final denials of the existence of racism or white supremacy. I'm not sure what other evidence needs to be put forth out there for our folks to continue to feel silenced and unseen and unheard. Fully support the motion and the amendment to that motion. Our work is far from done, people.
Yeah, this is a first, a really hopefully good first step. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, uh, real quick. I'm gonna support the motion. I have no trouble supporting it. I just think that other things should be addressed, and maybe it's doing that later. But I support the motion. I just don't think it goes far enough.
Counselor, I, trust me, we will be addressing this issue for much time to come. This is a very complicated issue. We're going to learn a lot about the kinds of things we can do. But first, we gotta get this step out of the way and get, get, uh, a very strong statement as to what the sense of this council is. I think we've had it. I just don't think we've said it quite as formally as we are tonight. Okay? Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, uh, for, for giving me a bit more time. Uh, so in conclusion, I support it. It will make us healthier.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, it'll make us healthier, but it will also make us safer. Um, you know, my brother's a, a major in the, um, Army Reserves here in Oregon, and I remember seeing, uh, it was either the Joint Chiefs of Staff or the Defense Department that said, one of our, our biggest threats to national security right now is this divide in our country. So, by doing this and making this announcement tonight, we'll make it safer, you know, here in Salem and throughout our region, so let's lead on this, like, let's make our, uh, city safer and healthier.
Okay? Very good. Okay, if, uh, there's no further comment, then, uh, we'll call the roll on, uh, the amendment, uh, to the motion. Then we'll call on the combined, and then we'll move on to the next one. Okay? So, could you call, uh, could you take the vote on the amendment, uh?
Yeah, yes, sure will. Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Hey, the motion passes unanimously. Now we have the amended motion on the floor. Uh, so if, is there any further discussion? Uh, if not, we'll go ahead and have the, on the final package.
Counselor Leung.
Is it possible to hear the actual complete new package?
Well, it's, yeah. Go ahead, Tom.
Um, yeah, Jackie, the, my end of it was, um, uh, it's a, it's a full page, and it was sent to you, I don't know, at your council email address, maybe little after five, I think, from, from, um, the city manager. But it basically, uh, says, we recognize there is white, uh, uh, um, white supremacy, and here's what it's defined as, white people are better than anybody else. That's very shorthanded. And we should have the power over everybody else. Uh, we recognize institutional racism, we condemn both those, and we, uh, um, uh, commit ourselves to do everything we can to, uh, fight against, uh, both those, uh, those things, white supremacy and institutional racism. And as part of that, the mayor's motion is to have the Human Race Relations Council, uh, Human Rights Council, excuse me, look at this and, and give us some further direction as to how we could achieve the goal, uh, uh, of the amendment. That's about as good as I can do.
Thank you. I just appreciate having that general summary parts. I understand what exactly, so aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Hey, motion passes unanimously. Very good. Now, take a quick look at what we've got here.
5B.
5B, yeah, I just needed to turn my page to C5B for a second. Oh, 5B is an extra. Uh, Jackie, do you wanna kinda launch this? I think what you're gonna need is a, uh, a rule change, a rule suspension first, and then your motion.
Is it the rule suspension first, or is it the other way around? Cuz.
Mayor Bennett.
Which you, which you prefer, Dan.
Yeah, just in the attorney, I, um, I had suggested to, to Counselor Leung that she do her main motion first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead then.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, counselors. I moved that city council direct staff to prepare a resolution for council's consideration to declare racism as a public health crisis. At our January twenty fifth meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Um, but for me to be able to move forward with this motion, I also have to ask that the council moved to, that I moved to suspend. Council moved, council suspended five J to allow council to vote on this item now.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Okay.
So, um.
Do you wanna, do you wanna discuss suspending the rules or shall we just vote on that right away?
Yeah.
Discuss that for a minute?
We vote on that right away.
Yeah, we can go right ahead. We can move right along. Okay, why don't we call the roll on suspending the rules so the counselor can move ahead?
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay. Suspend the rules. It took two thirds. We've got unanimous. So go ahead now, Jackie, with your, uh, discussion of your motion.
Thank you.
Substance of your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you counselors for, um, your willingness to suspend the rules. I really appreciate it considering all the things that are going on. You know, only here, but also throughout the nation. As a city council, we are elected by Salem residents to develop and decide policies that affect the city council and our city. Across the nation and even here in Salem, there's been ongoing and systemic spike of racist violence against black people and other people of color. Not only are we going through a national crisis as COVID nineteen is continuing to affect us all. We're also going through a local crisis happening here in Salem. Across the country, there have been local and state leaders who have been declaring that racism is a public health crisis. According to the American Public Health Association, APHA, these declarations have been extremely important. And I quote, "The first step in the movement to advance racial equity and justice. And it must also be followed by allocation of resources and strategic action." During the last several city council meetings, several counselors, including myself, have denounced racism. Racism permeates in both institutional and systemic settings and it continues to harm our residents. I mentioned this previously in council that I too also have experiences racism specifically here in Salem. From someone who spit in their truck at my daughter and I, when we were walking. To someone at Costco telling my family to fuck off. To hearing and receiving comments such as go back to your country, do you speak English? And even the microaggression, oh wow, you speak English so good. So let me tell you something. I was born here in the U.S. I'm also from a family of immigrants. Does that make me less of American? No, it does not. These people forget history. The U.S. was founded by immigrants. I recognize that the mayor has proposed agenda item under five A, which I'm glad it passed today. But we also need to do more. In addition to denouncing hateful racist acts that we've experienced, that we've heard from others and seen video proof of. We as a council need to take a stance towards addressing racism at its core. And this is why I am requesting that the council pass this resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis. And that we direct staff to return to us if possible by our work session on January nineteenth. Will we discuss a policy agenda, a draft declaration that we will approve at our next council meeting on the twenty fifth? This includes, well, it was sort of mentioned early, but we also need to include then recognize that white supremacy exists not only in Salem. But also exists in the nation. As elected leaders, we are responsible and we have the obligation to call out racism and white supremacy in all its form. And to ensure that our communities know where we stand against racism. And that we also recognize that racism permeates from structural institution, institutional racism. And even in the lived experiences that our communities of color live with and deal with every single day. There are currently multiple counties and states that have been approved such statements. So it's not unheard of and it's not a new unknown concept. And if, I also heard that the city of Kaiser passed a resolution. So if Kaiser could pass it, why not Salem? The APHA webpage, which I have linked also within the draft motion, has multiple declarations to review. And this is why I'm urging council tonight to please vote and pass this so that by our upcoming meeting work session and followed by our next city council meeting. We will actually have a resolution ready to go and approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Counselor Nordike?
I just want to, uh, say thank you, Jackie, for sharing. Your lived experiences are just one of the reasons why we must do this and we must do it now. Should have done it a long time ago. So thank you. I would note, I noticed an interesting parallel between our conversation tonight. And the simple act of denouncing white supremacy and racism and how challenging that can be for some. And I remember, uh, Roland Durera, Kaiser City Counselor. Face an unbelievably uphill battle in getting Kaiser City Council to acknowledge and recognize and condemn. Supremacy, white supremacy and racism. I, and I note some interesting parallels between that conversation, what I've seen unfold tonight. But it, this is one of the reasons why representation matters. And it is so important to have folks with lived experience like you. To help speak and have a seat at the table for conversations like this. So thank you for your resolution. Thank you for insisting upon urgency because the time is now. And we've had, already had a series of violent riots, mobs and so on. So thank you.
Right. Anyone else? Very good. Thank you, Jackie. Uh, then we'll take, uh, a vote. I'll have Amy count the vote on this.
Wait, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, Counselor Gonzalez raised his hand and then.
Well, I'm sorry. Well, I'm having a hard time seeing you, Jose. I apologize. You're real tiny.
You know, I, yeah, thanks, uh, Counselor Jackie for, uh, for, uh, taking the time to do this. And regarding health, public health. What I want to do is at least make myself available to anybody on this call, anybody in our community. You know, cause luckily I'm at a point in my life where I'm not afraid anymore, not afraid. And I just want to make myself available to anybody that is fearful. And I'll walk with them through this process. And I know we'll come out on the other side, but we sort of, we have to do it together. So I just wanted to make myself available. Uh, and you know, just mentioned that, you know, it's interesting to see, so nice to see people stand up, non-people of color. Cause you know, when my parents were deported twice, when they were, um, roadblocks on ninety ninety in Woodburn. Um, it was the officers with the INS agents, nobody stood up for us. You know, so it's, uh, nice to see that. And now what I'm also gonna invite everybody to come is also help me address some of the issues in northeast Salem. They said they're real threats. You know, uh, five blocks, four or five blocks from where I'm living was a shooting. Luckily the officers caught him a few weeks later, but in a few week, those weeks were, we were in the dark and what was happening. There was a murder on Norway, not too far from my office. Luckily they got caught. Couple of blocks this way on Hoover, by Hoover Elementary, Inglewood Park. I mean, I can go on and on. So. Everybody that sent that email, those emails, you know, that you do want a safer town, I need, I'm gonna need everybody's help over here. You know, because there's real, real things happening here. And that's why I'm here is to stand up for northeast Salem.
Thank you, counselor. That's my neighborhood too. Those are all within just blocks of where I live. Uh, and I, I know exactly what you're saying and what I'm hearing from my neighbors about. Just genuine fear about some of the things going on in the community. Um, and of course, Virginia, it's your ward. So we'll be looking forward to hearing from you on some of these issues as well. Okay, let's, uh, let's go ahead and vote on Jack. Sorry, Trevor.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, Counselors Leon and, and Counselor Gonzalez for speaking tonight and, and for bringing forward this, um. Uh, this amendment or, uh, this motion. Um, it's incredibly important. Um, like I said earlier tonight, you know, in, in the healthcare, we're, we're in the, the job of saving lives. And, and this motion, it is my opinion that it will save lives. Um, these things matter, um, to, to, to people in our community. So I'm, I'm just really encouraged and I emphatically support, um, the motion. Uh, I think we're all aware that there's the pandemic COVID nineteen. But, um, in the continuing medical, medical education I'm doing, uh, at Salem Hospital, um, called the Physician Leadership Institute. Um, they talk about, our physician leaders talk about how it's not one pandemic, it's the pandemics. Racism is itself a pandemic. And I think that there's this hope that, you know, after, you know, a week and a half from now, when there's a change in national leadership, we'll go back to normal. But normal is not good enough. So this motion and the accountability we're hearing from our counselors tonight is, is fantastic. And I look forward to voting yes on this motion.
Great. Counselor Stapleton?
I just wanted to say that I fully support these, um, motions tonight, really, um, encouraged by what we're doing here. And, um, thank you, Counselor Leon, for being vulnerable and, um, putting this out there. It's, it's not easy. So, um, just thank you so much for that. And Counselor Gonzalez, you and I, uh, these are our words that we're talking about. And you and I have already started a great relationship. I look forward to working together to, to help any way that we can with our words. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Amy, could you call the roll?
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Very good. We passed, uh, finally, we're able to pass motions like this unanimously. I'm really pleased we've been able to move this forward. I hope you will all stick with it, with the Human Rights Commission, with any other kind of information we need to keep pulling together. Uh, reading very carefully each of the resolutions, Jackie's when we get it. Uh, Tom's is, is in your packets. Get a look at that and, and recognize these are, these are not just gonna be virtue signals. This is gonna be some action we've gotta take. Uh, it's going to require us to step up on a regular basis on these issues. And I hope, uh, I hope we can find, uh, our way through them and that we'll get some, some very good advice from staff and any other. Committees as well as, uh, from the BIPOC community on the kinds of specific policies and direction we need to take. So I think it's a good piece of work tonight. So we're gonna move on to information reports. Let's start with the chief of police. Let's, let's not get off this roll for a minute and give the chief. Is that be okay, Steve?
Uh, certainly, Mayor. Thank you. I think he has a, a few slides he'd like to share. So it might take a moment for him to key those up, Chief Omac.
There he is. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, and also congratulations to new counselors. Um, let me see if I can share my screen properly here. Stand by one moment. Is that looking correct?
We can see you pretty well.
No screen yet. How about? That way? Stand by.
I was gonna share you my one piece of IT knowledge, which is push the green button.
There you go. Let's try it again. How does that look? Is that working?
All we see is a green screen.
Yeah, interesting.
It did show up initially, but once you hit the play button, that's when we got the green screen.
Okay.
A slide, is there a slideshow? But there it is. Excellent. That's got it.
Are you seeing just the full slide or are you seeing my presenter view?
Seeing the full slide.
I think that's correct then. Okay, sorry about that little hitch there. Uh, but yes, I'm happy tonight to, uh, be with you, share a little bit about, um. Uh, a topic that's been impacting our community. Obviously, all of us have been affected. And so I thought it was important to provide an update on, um, our strategic approach to protests and assemblies and marches in our community. And, and begin to share as much information as we can about how we're approaching these, uh, managing these protests. Stepping back, um, just a bit here, just, uh, to recognize, uh, the change that's occurred in our community even before I started. This, uh, we've had just since June of twenty twenty, about a hundred different events and protests at or on Capitol grounds. And again, this is so much why, uh, why so much of this is happening here is because we're a capital city. Of course, obviously the, the capital draws in, uh, the attention from many folks on various issues. Um, and, but the frequency, the intensity of the protests that we've seen since June, um, are relatively new for our city. And so our approach to these processes has continued to evolve to where we are today and, and it will continue to evolve as we go forward. Since taking over as your police chief a little over a month ago. We've worked hard to try to, to share information more. And I'm talking about the quality of information. The frequency, frequency of sharing information and the timeliness of sharing information. So I wanted to touch a little bit on, uh, the communication efforts that we've been working on. And so, uh, back in mid-December, I believe it was December seventeenth or eighteenth. Uh, issued a open letter to the community, just acknowledging that after my first couple of weeks on the job that I had heard. The concerns of the community, uh, that I acknowledged those concerns and that we as a department were working to incorporate. Uh, that input into our operating procedures and our approaches to protests. Uh, and so the letter here, we did in Spanish and English as well. And this is all, all the documents that I'm gonna show are still online available now for folks to see at the city's website if interested. We were also receiving many questions about protests, um, from all segments of the community. And a lot of the questions were the same type of questions. And so we tried to consolidate answers here. There's a hyperlink in the document. It will go to some frequently asked questions again on the website to try to begin answering questions more broadly for the community. And this is the frequently asked questions page that I was referring to. So questions we were receiving like, why is this, why are these protests even happening in our city? Why are protests occurring when, uh, uh, they're not permitted? Marches aren't permitted, for example. Uh, can the city just shut down assemblies or marches? Lots of questions about folks carrying weapons in public, open carry laws. Um, and so a lot of those answers are online. This is still an available resource for everyone. And I would encourage the counselors. Um, to continue to refer folks to this and the community that might be listening tonight, uh, to take advantage of this resource. We're gonna keep this updated as we receive new questions or information. We'll keep this site updated. Continuing to expand, uh, expand upon the, the communication. We have been trying to get information out better in advance of protests. When we know or anticipate there will be a significant protest in our city, uh, we try to advise the community of that in advance. So this is another example, uh, before the January first protest, we issued a community message regarding that protest. Reassuring the community that we were aware and that we were preparing well. Um, and we began to expand here towards the bottom as far as explaining what our primary goals and objectives are during these type of protests. And before I, I touch on each one of those goals and objectives, I just want to step back a bit again. And, and I've said this before, but I think it's, it's key to emphasize that the police remain right here in the middle of this balance. And we're, we're trying to balance the important interests, sometimes competing interests that occur during protests. Of public safety and community safety. Um, and also individuals' expression of their constitutional rights, the First Amendment, freedom of speech and assembly. The Second Amendment to keep and bear arms. And so we find ourselves as your police department in the middle, making all of our judgments and decisions on the fly. Um, in the heat of the moment, so to speak, balancing those two sometimes competing interests. It's a challenging environment to operate in. So with that in mind. Here are the, the goals and objectives that we've landed on now. And right here in the first bullet, these are listed, listed in priority order as well. So at the top. And this whole idea here of public safety and constitutional rights, uh, written right into this first primary objective. So first and foremost, our primary goal for any protest is to prevent any violence from occurring. Or immediately quickly stop any violence that does develop. Close thereafter is preventing or stopping significant property damage. And this was written after the attack on our Capitol here as well. So we included. Part of our goal, primary goal is to deny the unlawful occupation of public or private buildings as well and to protect our buildings. And the final part is we're gonna do all that while we're respecting, protecting, encouraging individuals' rights to free speech and assembly. So there, again, it's that balance that I was talking about. Secondly, we wanna, we wanna work to keep opposing groups from. Secondly, we wanna, we wanna work to keep opposing groups from, from converging in order to prevent violence and best ensure community safety. As we've all seen, it's obvious when groups that are strongly ideologically opposed or in different camps come into contact, the risk of violence greatly increases. And so this is just another nuance within our management of these protests that we have to be careful with. Allowing groups to assemble peacefully, to exercise their rights, but at the same time, working hard to prevent violent conflicts. So there are times when we work to intervene and keep groups separated to limit the risk of violence. Again, in the interest of community safety. Next. And there, there's some, been some misperceptions here, that's why I want, I wanna mention this specifically and call this out. We wanna take a proper, a proper enforcement action to address minor offenses when reasonable and appropriate. There's a lot packed into that sentence. Minor offenses would be things like traffic violations. They would have a permit if that's required. These, these are infractions that would, that would result in just a citation, not an arrest, no one being taken into custody to jail. These are just minor infractions. Folks with license plates covered up, for example, those type of traffic violations. We do care about those violations, we do wanna enforce those, but it's, we have to do that only when reasonable and appropriate. So it's always gonna depend on the size of the crowd that we're dealing with, whether there are two opposing groups that are about to come into contact, the level of cooperation we're receiving from a group versus the unruliness of a crowd. All these factors come into play, and, and the staffing capacity that we have. Do we have enough officers to do this in a safe manner? So we do call out and want to address minor offenses, but only when it's reasonable and appropriate, given the circumstances. Because what happens is if you take officers away from their primary goals and issue citations, for example, then that reduces your ability, our ability as an agency, to make sure we take care of primary goal number one, stopping and preventing violence. So if there's a risk of violence occurring or property damage occurring, that outweighs our ability to take minor enforcement action. And finally, the, the managing of a protest is not in for us when the protest is over that day. A lot of work goes into preparing, a lot of work happens on the day of, but then also, we wanna make sure that we're conducting quality follow-up investigations to address any significant criminal behavior that occurred that we were not able to immediately address during the event. And hopefully, the community's seen some of that. We've posted some pictures of some individuals to be identified, the community's helped us to identify those individuals, and some arrests and prosecution is coming for some individuals that weren't addressed during the protest, but are now being addressed after the fact. And so we emphasize during the protest, we wanna try to capture as much evidence that we can, as much documentation as we can, so that we can conduct quality follow-up investigations after the fact. So those are our goals and objectives that we've set out, we've made public for the community, and that we're following during all these protests. Again, expanding upon communication, multiple levels of communication. We, we always try to reach out to the organizers of any group if they're known, whether that's formal or informal organizers. This is something that is a best practice in law enforcement, this is something that Salem Police Department has been doing all along. But I would say now what we're trying to do is even be more intentional, be more proactive in advance even, to the point where we've even reached out to folks on social media, specifically requesting them to please contact us so we can communicate about what a safe event looks like. We've reached out into specific neighborhoods. When there is a protest that we know specifically will impact a certain neighborhood, for example, if there's a march and we know that it's planned to go through a certain residential neighborhood, we wanna do the best we can to proactively notify those folks. And so we've been pushing information out on social media and those type of channels, but also occasionally, we go into neighborhoods and make contact door-to-doors as this picture shows here. This is resource intensive, it, it is, and so this has to be balanced within our, our ability to do so, given the situation and circumstances. But it is, it isn't ideal that we're after. And then just messaging to our overall community. So I showed you one message that we put up in advance of the January first protest, and here again, we, we posted a message to our community in advance of the January sixth protest. So we're doing the best we can to push information out, to keep our community aware and reassure the community that we are planning and prepared. Communication with our partner agencies as well. There's ongoing communication well before every event, during the event, and it continues after the event as well. And when I say partner agencies, I don't, I don't just mean outside agencies, even within the city. So we work closely with our fire department, Public Works Department. I thank them greatly for their assistance, and we coordinate before, during, and after these events in our management of the events. Also, some of our primary outside law enforcement partners, of course, Oregon State Police. So many of our events are directed at or take place at the Capitol grounds, which is the jurisdiction of the Oregon State Police. And so it requires close coordination and communication before, during, and after the event. Marion County Sheriff's Office as well has provided a lot of resources and support and other agencies as well. For example, Kaiser PD has assisted us at times with handling some of our routine calls for service when our resources are, are directed towards handling a protest. Salem Health has been an excellent partner as well. Thankfully, we haven't had any sort of mass casualty event or a large number of injuries during a protest, but that risk always is there. And so we partner with Salem Health, Health in advance and our long, and our EMS partners to be prepared, to be prepared should there be injuries. And then District Attorney's Office as well, so I mentioned following up on cases, seeking to hold folks accountable after the fact. And, and the District Attorney's Office has been a great partner there as well. So that was just kind of an overview of our approach to protests. Again, this is evolving, but I just wanna step back again, and I think it's, this is worth stating, that everything that I've presented so far, it's based solely upon the neutral interest of overall public safety, and it's regardless of any views held or expressed by any particular group. It's regardless of ideologies, it's regardless of political affiliations. As your police chief and as the Salem Police Department, we are committed to staying neutral and dealing with behaviors as we see them that are criminal in nature and protecting community safety. So we will continue to make decisions in the neutral interest of community safety. With that, excuse me, I'm moving a piece out of the way here. I wanted to make a few closing comments here too before I end the actual presentation. These, these, these protests that we're seeing and the amount of resources that we've been dedicating to these, these protests are intense, and, and they're taxing our limited resources. That's both the hard costs money-wise to our budget and also the workload carried by my staff. I'm proud of the men and women of the Salem Police Department and, and the way they've been handling these protests. They're dangerous volatile situations, and they've been working a lot of extra time, and it's been pulling folks away from their normal duties. And I just wanna recognize that as well. And, and, and preface that should these protests continue, I'm not so sure that, that this level of response is sustainable as it is. And so this may require us to do some adjustment of our priorities and unfortunately, not be able to provide the same level of quality police services to our community that they expect and deserve. These protests are quite demanding and resource intensive. Also, looking ahead, I just wanna say, what I talked about here was what we've done. Looking ahead now, we're all aware of what happened this past Wednesday, both locally here and at the national level. And we are preparing. We're, we're well aware of the multiple potential protests that are being discussed, that many of you may have heard about as well, upcoming from now up until and including inauguration day. And so we are in constant communication with our partners, especially from Oregon State Police. I was on the phone with the superintendent myself personally today, so we're closely communicating and coordinating to make it sure that we are prepared. And it's again, as a reminder, any events that occur on state property or directed at the Capitol, the lead agency is gonna be Oregon State Police. We will be there in a supporting role as we've been for the past two protests, but the lead agency will be Oregon State Police for the Capitol grounds. Finally, also, I wanted to go ahead and touch on a smaller incident that occurred over this weekend. A group that wanted to make a statement about not wearing masks in public. And this was posted and it was widely, widely circulated on social media. Showed up at WENCO, and there was a small group there of maybe fifteen to twenty people, these so-called anti-maskers, for lack of a better term. And they, they demonstrated for a bit at WENCO, but were there briefly, not very long, and then they directly moved over to Trader Joe's nearby, where they were met with more resistance from the staff at Trader Joe's as far as not letting them enter the building, which is their right to do, as far as not letting folks in. And I just wanna reassure the council and the public that our officers on duty that day, supervisor was in direct communication with the management of both WENCO and Trader Joe's throughout that incident. We had direct lines of communication with their upper management throughout that day, and we were actively monitoring that situation. So thankfully, there was a little bit of disturbance that occurred there, but again, no one was injured, no property damage occurred. And so in that sense, it was, it was well handled, but we were in direct communication with the management from both stores. So with that.
Thank you, Chief, very much. Very, very informative. Chief, if you were to pick, I know, one thing you need in terms of city policy, besides more police officers, not a budgetary, I'm sure you need them, but what, what could we do? It's a city that would make your job easier as you deal with these demonstrations.
I've been trying to, again, to me, the communication is, is so important. And so I will do my best, I'm committed to try to get factual information out to the council as, as quickly as I can. Now, you have to give me a little bit of leeway there, because the faster we're gonna push information out, the more risk is that it won't be a hundred percent accurate, so.
You'll be up against really inaccurate from others, so.
And that's what I mean.
See how it all goes.
Staying neutral, I wanna try to put the facts out as quickly as I can as we see it, as, as we see it, factual information.
Well, one of the things I was, I mentioned it to the manager this morning was, how quickly can we get back to needing permission to have some of these demonstrations? That you, you come in and register with us, tell us who your leadership is so we can make contact with them, give us an idea of the size of crowd, you know, just a basic permit of some kind. I know a lot of folks are just really concerned that these, these are happening ad hoc. And we heard an example of it, I think Mr. Jones from the Apilogue described a situation where people came by. I don't know whether it was one of his many emails or, or something else, but people came by his store, and, and it was, you know, it's one of those, if we're gonna have people driving around, how do we get, how do we get identification on these people in advance? Who are these people? I mean, we hear all these names of groups on both sides, but how do we get a permit going again?
Well, I think it's specific to when we can do permits again, I'll defer to the city manager, but I would like to speak to this item of, or this issue about groups in general. Some of these protests, we've had two hundred and fifty, three hundred people show up. So there, there typically is not just one organizer. A lot of times these groups, not everybody within the group is the same, not everybody within the group shares the same intentions. And so it, it's difficult to hold one person or a few people accountable for a large group of people like that as well. So that's just another area that gets difficult to pinpoint who's responsible for this entire group as well.
Nordike, did I see your hand up? Nordike?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Omac, thank you so much. I firmly believe that now that we know that the FBI has announced planned armed marches at all fifty state capitals in the works, all fifty state capitals, which means us, of course, yet again, we see our citizens caught in the crossfire through no fault of their own.
There's been no crossfire yet, right? I, I wanna, a little concerned by the language, Counselor.
So I firmly believe that we need to call up the National Guard for a large armed protest, if protest is too kind of a word for this violent mob. But I urge you to consider, and I don't know if this should be addressed to you, the city manager, and/or the mayor. I think it's important, I've already called on our mayor to urge the National Guard to come out, but it is our law enforcement who are disproportionately bearing the cost and the risk of responding to these individuals who come from all over the state and perhaps even outside of the state. And there is a true toll that it takes on everyone. And having the mere deterrent presence of National Guard could make a huge difference in causing people to think twice before breaking our laws. So that's just a point for your consideration, I'd be happy to follow up with you later. I also wanna point out and thank you for a couple of things. One, I ask you to reach out to neighbors in my ward who have been subjected to profanity-laced maskless road shows through my ward on their way to the governor's mansion. I asked you to reach out to the members of my ward, and your law enforcement officers did so by putting up door hangers, knocking on doors, and in general, making yourselves available for questions, one-on-one even, with the neighbors in my ward about the protests and other marches that were coming up the street. So thank you for that, and I have heard positive things about those interactions. I also appreciate the frequently asked questions that have been available on the city's website. I say we need more of those. So one of the questions that I keep getting over and over again is we have citizens without legal training or criminal justice background who are asking us what these laws mean, our laws on menacing, disorderly conduct, trespass, and other laws that can frequently be invoked during protest. So feedback that I would take to you and the other city leadership, the manager, city manager and the city attorney is, let's keep these frequently asked questions up to date, and I would like to see more information about how these laws actually work, so that people who don't have legal training, who don't have all of the expertise can understand what they mean. Counselor Hoyd mentioned in a prior meeting that some criminal, some criminal laws require a victim. If there's no victim, there's no crime. And so I think it would be helpful for all of us in Salem to understand, does menacing require a specific victim to come forward? And what does a private property owner have to do to have someone trespassed from their business who is refusing to wear a mask, putting their employees at, at risk and putting their customers at risk? Which of these crimes require a victim and which don't? So I would just urge you to work with our city attorney, our city manager, because people wanna know. And these are the questions that we, as a city council, are getting all the time. What does menacing mean? What does disorderly conduct mean? Trespass, and so on. The more people understand, the more they can work with you and build trust. I have had too many people tell me that they don't feel that they can even report a crime because they don't think it'll be taken seriously. We need to build this trust gap, we need to build a bridge, and I want to work with you on all of that. So thank you for listening to my feedback, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Counselor Lewis?
Thanks, Chief, for, for your presentation tonight. Two questions, one other, and I, I agree, communication is the key to everything, it always has been, always will be. And one of the things I've appreciated about your work in the short time is your communication with the council and the city staff. In particular, the events of January first, where you kinda gave us a blow-by-blow description of how things were going, not, not live, but after you've had a chance. And then following that up with the final report. Same thing happened on January sixth, where there was several emails about what was going on in the process. But I, I didn't, I didn't get a final report, and I, I encourage you to, even if it's just a repetition of what you've said in previous emails, to give us after occasions like this what you'd call a final report. I think that helps. And the other question I had was, on one of the goals, you talk about keeping groups from converging together, which increases the likelihood of violence. What my sense is, we saw on January sixth was the police department's attempt to do just that, but that, that convergence of the two opposing groups happened anyway. And I'm guessing that happened because you can ask people to do or not do certain things, but you can't keep people from walking on the sidewalk in any particular direction. And so therefore, there wasn't really anything you could do to keep those groups from coming together. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Counselor Leon?
Thank you, um, Chief Womack. I have a more of a general question about what happened on January sixth from. Um, videos and things like that. Is this a platform you either ask those questions, or should that be a separate discussion?
I can do, so, so um, just so everyone's aware, after these events, we do review everything, right? That, that takes some time. And so I'll do my best to try to answer questions kind of generally here. Um, but, but we haven't fully, you know, sorted everything out to make sure we have all the facts straightened there. So I'll be careful, but I'll do my best to answer the question.
Okay, um, so what I've heard from some community members is that, as you had mentioned earlier, or it was discussed, or there was two different. Areas that were, they had the white supremacist groups that were there, but we also had Jonathan Jones, his business was specifically targeted. And that he had some supporters who were trying to keep his area protected. Uh, from the other individuals who um, were trying to menace him. And so uh, my, my question is like, in terms of how the officers were deployed initially, my understanding is that they were facing. The group that was trying to protect the restaurant versus the other direction. And I was wondering if that is something that you could talk about tonight, or if not tonight, it has to be a different conversation.
I, I would just say in generally, that there was a group there, uh, a decent-sized group, and there was another group on the other side. Um, and so our officers uh, have to make quick judgments in, on, on, in the heat of the moment. And to make determination as far as who a primary aggressor is, or who's the most cooperative group versus a different group, is very difficult to ascertain. And the mission is just to keep the group separated. And so officers will step in and work to try to keep those groups separated. One thing that happened there is there were several arrests made. They weren't arrests made of the folks that were in front of Epilogue. So even though there may have been some initial confusion or confrontation there. Uh, the group that was committing violations and crimes were the ones that were held accountable.
Thank you, Chief. Who we got? Virginia, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief, could you talk a little bit about? This issue we've been having uh, throughout the pandemic, where groups will gather without wearing masks? And it seems that we don't uh, try and confront them, or, and I, I think what it is, is that a lot of people. They're all playing by the rules, and we're all trying to do this thing together, and they're seeing this, this group or groups. Um, that are kind of defying the rules, and, and you know, we all want to scream, that's not fair, and um, it's a concern, it's a public health concern. So what are we gonna do about it? So when we see things like what happened at Trader Joe's and um. Not seeing, you know, people arrested, or some type of, I don't even know what would happen, so I guess that's what I'm asking you. One, what would happen, and why was there not a presence there? Could you answer that for me?
Sure, so just about um, mask-wearing in general, for example, and the governor's executive orders. Uh, from the beginning of the pandemic, all Oregon law enforcement agencies, police and sheriff's department. Have taken the same approach, was education first and seeking voluntary compliance, which is not different at all from California. Same approach in California, so this is not abnormal, this is actually the norm. Um, and so when it comes to just the fact that folks aren't wearing masks, for example, it's not something that the police in Oregon are generally enforcing. Uh, we're seeking education and voluntary compliance. So when something occurs on private property like that, at a Trader Joe's or a Winco at a store. It's really up to the store to determine if they're gonna allow folks in or not. And then if they want folks removed, for example, if they've told people to leave and they're refusing, there may be a trespass violation. And that's when it would be, uh, it would be up to the store to request our assistance with enforcing that and making trespass arrests. Um, so that didn't occur on Saturday. So, but that's how that would play out. We, there, there was a presence. People might not have seen uh, five police cars driving around, but there was in fact a presence. And there was a direct communication occurring between a supervisor with my department and the management of the store.
Thank you. That is really helpful, I think, for a lot of people to just get that all out and, and understand it a little bit better. So thank you so much for that.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief, thanks for this presentation, and I've got a couple of comments and then kind of a question. Uh, my first comment is, I really appreciate your attempts to communicate both to the council and to the city in general. I'll also tell you that um, and I think you know this, uh, but when you send those messages to us as counselors. I copy them, cut and paste them, and put them on my council Facebook page. You know, s- some of the extraneous stuff that is going to the council, I take off, but. But the, the bulk of what you are saying, uh, I'm putting out there on my Facebook page, and then I'm sharing it with as many other groups that I'm there. So just so, I, I'm sure you are aware of that, but now you know it for sure. And then I, with respect to communication, I understand you are coming to. Scan meeting on uh, Wednesday, and I'm pretty sure it'll be the whole meeting, and Scan. Uh, you may or may not know this yet, but Scan is Ward Two and Ward Seven. So Fairmont Hill is Ward Seven, that's part of Scan. From Saginaw going eastward is, is including LaFell and everything through there, LaFell, the Lower LaFell Park on um. Is, is Scan. So I really encourage you to get out to as many neighborhood groups as you can. And I'm sure everybody wants to talk to you because you're somebody new in town. That's interesting. The second thing is, and I've discussed this in council meetings before, and I know you're per, you're extremely aware of it. But we've got this balancing act, as you say, between uh, constitutional rights and. And uh, individual uh, concerns for safety. And one of the things that I have discussed before with other counselors is that there are certain things that may or may not be covered. How far you want to extend by the First Amendment and/or the Second Amendment in terms of free speech and right to bear arms. But there are other things that have nothing to do with either of those amendments. Um, you know, alcohol in parks, uh, the other crimes that Counselor Nordak was talking about menacing and all that other stuff. So I, I, I know it's a tough thing to balance at the time, but. That may be one way to focus on things where there are problems, that these are things that are statutory violations, not constitutional rights. And finally, um, uh, I certainly agree that with your goal that we need to keep groups apart. Uh, but I will, but I will also say that we need to have equal treatment, and I know you're well aware of that. But oftentimes in the community, uh, perceptions become reality, and maybe the perceptions aren't that there are equal treatment. And one way I, I am sure that some people could look at it is, if you gotta keep two groups apart. And one group are openly carrying and armed and uh, in military gear, and the other group are a little more peaceful. It might be easier to, to, to put your attentions at keeping the more peaceful group. Uh, as opposed to taking actions to move the, move out or move along or encircle the group that is armed. I wonder if you could just talk to that, that uh, perception in general.
We're, we're gonna try to be neutral and make decisions based on the balance that I've been talking about. The one event that comes to mind as you're speaking is, hopefully get my dates straight here, but the, the last one we had on January sixth. And both sides, for lack of a better term, were armed. Both sides. I saw it myself. So both sides were armed. So one might have been more armed than the other, but there was guns on both sides of the equation. And so it's, it's often difficult to make that determination as far as which group is the more, you know, peaceful or less uh, dangerous group. Um, and then one group was at a location well before another group. Um, and one group decided to go confront that group. So which group do I stop? So there's all these factors that come into play. Um, and in the end, we couldn't stop them anyway. They still had a confrontation. And so these are the decisions we're trying to make, and all I can do is reassure you. That um, that, that we have commanders and an entire management system away from what's happening in the field. And we're trying to make those decisions at a high level as far as what our field teams are gonna do. And we're, we're assessing the situation real-time continually and trying to make those neutral decisions as best we can.
I, I appreciate your explanations, uh, Chief, and I also appreciate that the communication is, is a key, a key tool in this. Um, and uh, the more you can communicate to us and the more we can, and we can therefore then communicate to the public, I think, the more helpful it is. And so thanks for the work you're doing.
Yeah, very much. Thank you. Uh, the uh. I think it's important as we talk about the community that we recognize, we're talking about a very small groups on both sides. I, I think the broad, the broad community here, the one hundred seventy-seven thousand people that actually live in Salem. Uh, are very, very supportive of the work you're doing and admire the fact you're willing to stand between two armed groups. Uh, I, I really can't tell you how, how much we appreciate you all go out there. On each of these things, and in many cases, go out there without the information you should have from the groups that are. Are participating to tell you what's going on. I really can't tell you how much personally I admired, and I, I genuinely believe from the. Uh, contacts I get, the broad community feels the same way. Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, uh, Chief Womack, for being here and your presentation and for the comments of my fellow counselors that, that spoke before me. Um, I mean, uh, the first thing I would like to say is, I think that, you know, in your short time here, it would appear. That you've really put in the work and you, uh, and your department are exemplifying that serve and protect. So thank you for that, um, and welcome to Salem. Um, you know, the last year has been rough. Uh, there have been, you know, it sounds like, and I think anecdotally, we've all seen it a lot more. You know, activity in terms of protests. Um, and, and a growing, you know, sense of concern that things could take a turn for the worse, but so far. You know, there's been imperfection and there have been shortcomings, and, and when we, or when I, and I think the majority of my counselors speak of shortcomings. We're not criticizing you. We want you to succeed, and we want you to improve and be better. Um, but like, in the last year, there's been a growing sense that something bad could happen. Um, and I, I, it's a credit to the department that nothing, um, you know, like, there has been no loss of life in the city. Um, and, and I don't think after last week, that feels like a guarantee. I can't imagine what it would be like to be in your position, you know, standing between two armed and potentially dangerous entities. Uh, I, I thank everyone who serves for being there, um, and, and keeping our community safe. But there are real concerns from our community member about that. I, I know that in my emergency room group, we have discussed the increased likelihood of mass casualty events. When people are the victims of being sprayed by bear mace, or worse, they come to our emergency room. And so this is, this is very real. Um, so I'm, I'm glad there haven't been bullets, but I, I feel like people have already gotten caught, caught in the crossfire. And so I, I just, I have some concerns about uh, you know, the, the status quo. I, I think that it, it really is more frustratingly true that it's, it's beneficial for you to, your department to have that neutrality. But sometimes there's a false equivalency there, and that not all of these events are quote-unquote protests. It's my understanding that this is a spectrum. I mean, some things are protests, a little bit of civil disobedience, but then you get outright unlawful behavior. And last week at our nation's capital, we saw things including domestic terrorism. And an attempt to overthrow our democratically elected government. And as a capital city, I, I share the concern of other counselors here that. Even if we fix racism, which we won't, it will take years to do the work that is ending racism, we will remain a target as a city capital. So um, you know, what assurances can you give us that, that you're prepared for a different situation? One that doesn't, you know, it doesn't fit into that model of equality between individual rights and public safety. Where you have people that have expressed an interest to do things that are potentially violent or probably violent.
So, when it comes to speech, I mean, there's not, there's not much we can do, obviously, right? But if there's genuine legitimate threats, then that reaches a criminal nature, then, then we will react to that appropriately. When we saw the, the assault on our Capitol here, our officers were in the building and defended it. Our officers were in the building and they defended it. And folks have been held accountable. And so regardless of what group we're talking about, which side we're talking about. If there's an assault, there's crimes, there's criminal behavior, there's legitimate threats, we're here, and we will deal with them, we'll stand against them. And at, and knowing what's happened, looking back over the past couple of protests, especially what happened in Washington DC. I think we have to take groups at their word, right? You can't ignore that, and so uh, what's being threatened or said. Uh, we have to view that as potentially legitimate. And so as I said. I spoke with the Superintendent OSP this morning, myself on the phone. We are in close coordination. We are assessing all of the intelligence that we have as it comes in, um, and preparing appropriately.
Very good. I, I think, I appreciate those comments. Um, I, I, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I do feel more reassured. I, I don't think that the community gets the information that we as counselors get. I mean, I know that Counselor Anderson and others have done an, an effort to educate. The city of Salem, but um, we, we are aware of information, and, I mean, like, there's an example of the Trader Joe's incidents this past weekend. I think people have an opinion or, or a thought that like, the city or the city police refuse to respond, and that's factually inaccurate. You guys were in communication with Trader Joe's, um, and I get the sense that they felt like they had your backing. If you guys watched that video, the, the manager and the employees of Trader Joe's, which is in Ward Three, this ward. Um, it was a masterclass of de-escalation. Um, and, and I think that uh, you know, it, it's just so important for all of us to take this seriously. Don't discount what community members are, are saying. Um, and I, I, I appreciate that you will take people at their words. Um, so, you know, thank you for your time, and, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chief. I think if, if you don't mind, we need to move on. We've got still a, an urban renewal meeting, uh, agency meeting. Uh, to get through as well. So Chief, thank you very much. Thank you for correcting the record on some of these issues we've heard about as well. Really appreciate it. Hey, what else we got here? Anybody else want to talk about any of these information items? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to talk about this, the, you know, three-quarter, that's three-quarter inches worth of paper we got on. Agenda Item Six A, which is the uh, the Pioneer Pathway. Um, I, I just want to say that we've got tons of. Citizens talking to us about this, from the neighborhood groups that are uh, in favor of, of some kind of path. To residents who are in favor of a path, to residents who aren't in favor of path, to the Pioneer Cemetery people who aren't in favor of a path. And it just seems we got some more work to do here, but I will also say that. If you're an engineer, like Public Works person, everything looks like an engineering problem that needs an engineering solution. Let's pave the pathway. Let's, let's, you know, do all these kind of engineering stuff. When I see, we see a proposal from Scan, we see a proposal from Swan, we see a proposal from Mr. Wig. We need, we see something from Bonnie Heiss that say, maybe there's a way we can kind of de-escalate this down into. Uh, uh, I think Sunny, Sunny Slope did too, where we can de-escalate this to, to a gravel pathway. To a simple gate and this sort of stuff, and so I, I, I just think that uh, the. Public Works people need to meet with the neighborhood groups again, and maybe with the individual people and come up with a little.
Pathway.
Yeah, 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 something a little narrower in scope than a half-million-dollar project. Uh, uh, and, and I'm sure there are ways that can do it, and I also look and see, okay, we've got a, we've got an easement that we're not using, but we could use. And we have another easement uh, that we kind of used to have that was vacated by a prior council, but then we have part of an easement. And I think they might be able to have some little horse trading to get the easement to go out to John Street. So we don't go through uh, 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 more private property than we have to. And I think that there, there are just a lot of different ways we can look at this to be a little more creative than. Let's just go in there and pave the whole, whole cemetery's over. So that's my comment.
Okay. Counselor Nordak?
What we need is the path of least resistance. Oh, yes. I went there. So what we need is not a five-hundred-thousand-dollar cost estimate. And that's not at all what I recall asking for. I don't believe we need a nine-foot paved path. I've met with individuals, I've toured the Pioneer Cemetery with the Friends of Pioneer. I've met with neighborhood groups about this issue for months. And we all agree that the Pioneer Cemetery is one of Salem's many historical jewels. And having a simple compacted gravel path is what would make the most sense. Not only to ensure the historical integrity, because there already is a gravel path through the cemetery. But also because as stewards of taxpayer dollars, we owe it to our residents to find the most cost effective path. So I will continue to meet with residents and work with the counselor Anderson on this. And I just want to remind folks that from what I hear from some of my more seasoned members of the community. There used to be a path through the cemetery. And in fact, right now, there is an illegal path through City View. Where children and others will crawl over a damaged chain link fence, which is a physical safety issue, a security issue. And so in fact, the notion that if you have a path through the cemetery, there will be mass vandalism. I give you Exhibit A, the existing path right now, which thank goodness has not led to the wanton destruction of historical markers. There already is a path. It has not led to the vandalism that we all hope never, ever happens. So yes, I would like to work with Public Works. I'd like to work with all interested parties. I'd like to work with my peers and so on to find the path of least resistance.
Counselor, do you, do you and Counselor Anderson have some sort of timeline to bring this to us? Do you, or is it still a, is this, because this has been going on as long as I can remember. So I'm just wondering if you see and you have an end game in, in mind yet? Or is it, is it going to continue to be? Now, I agree with you, working with people and getting people on board, but how?
Mayor, that's a great question. You see, as you know, we brought the motion to the city council. I brought the motion to the city council to have staff conduct an investigation.
Right.
And that initial investigation was kind of vague. And so I asked city staff, can you please provide more information? And that unfortunately necessitated another motion. That motion was brought. And then understandably so, our city staff have an incredible workload right now. They are not only juggling all their usual responsibilities, but also this request. So yes, we do need a timeline. I wholeheartedly agree with that. I also recognize that city staff's bandwidth means that they have to triage this amidst COVID. The financial toll of COVID, the wildfires, the protests, and on and on it goes. So.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll look forward to that. I'm sure everyone will. Chris, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to change, change topics and talk about six F. We asked the city manager to come back to us within thirty days to talk about camping with, in Cascade Gateway Park. And he has submitted a report to us and I would like to hear from him, what his thoughts are on this. I know this is sort of a preliminary plan, not really a final plan. But I would, I think we need to spend a little bit of time and I recognize the late hour, but we need to give this some attention tonight. So I would like to hear from the city manager on six F, please.
Thank you, Council. Because of the short time, I'd like to turn it right over to Gretchen Bennett, who's been our lead person on, on, and really in drafted the, the report and the preliminary plan. While, while she's turning her mic on, really in, in summary, we are aggressively with help of partners in the community. We are aggressively moving people who are sheltering in the parks and probably elsewhere. Two more appropriate shelter options and Gretchen can speak to that. We are also, we have two cleanups planned in January for the parks. So we're continuing to try to be responsive to the impacts, which undoubtedly have occurred in areas that have been historically areas of camping. This is not new to either one of those parks. And, and we need to be respectful of the parks as well as, as the individuals who are, are sheltering in those parks. Until we can provide a better, a better method of, of, of sheltering as, as a community. So Gretchen, is there more you'd like to say on that?
Quickly, I can point out that the, the rain is going to be strong in the next couple of days. It really underscores the importance of a broader regional strategy to, to resolve these issues and meet these needs. Community action is standing up additional sheltering and seeking volunteers to assist with that in the coming days. Let's see, the plan includes working together, recognizing the, the regional strategies that need to be at play. Honoring the point in time count that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Beginning with our beginning, which is to prevent the spread of COVID pandemic and the concern for worse health outcomes for the population by paying attention to physically distant spaces. By pointing out the resource gaps. There's people I've met that I continue to think about that have very significant behavioral health challenges. Whose needs aren't met with the existing sheltering systems that would benefit from a strategy such as permanent supportive housing. And yet we need so many more of those programs. So there's significant need here to work on. We need to work on keeping the parks as healthy and clean as possible. You know, the responding to the garbage issues, continuing with cleans, monthly deep cleans as well as daily trash pickups and responding to reports of criminal activity. Working to expand sheltering of all types, paying attention to the individual needs of people and listening to what's going to make sense in that particular situation. I want to end with, speaking of Counselor Nordike's point about building trust. Compelling people into specific situations is rarely an option for government, for police, for families. And so it will be important to really be hearing and working together with each person to, to be as successful as we can be. This plan is preliminary. It presents an incremental approach and rigorous work. As Corey said, going big on working with each person to try to identify and find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. I have a follow up question, something I think I heard the city manager say. And I would just want to clarify and, and give a word of caution. I hope that any cleanup that's happening in the month of January is we recognize that the point in time count is coming. And that sometimes those cleanups can cause people to be displaced. And I don't want anything to happen that will disrupt or cause an inaccurate count this year. So I, I just want to throw that out there and remind folks of that. And also if you could speak, I think that when you and I spoke, you're looking at some specific alternate places that are new. And so I know that you may not be prepared to talk about those specifically, but just that I think it's important for people to understand that that is the case. And that that's where your head is, creating more options for people to live that aren't, that would, do not include the parks.
That's absolutely right. I'm in partnership with several nonprofit organizations around looking for standing up additional managed camp type operations. Pursuing that tiny home strategy, expanding hoteling, expanding safe vehicle park locations. Yes, that's at the heart of what we're doing right now. We're looking for locations and partners. The ongoing capacity to operate these is a concern and a question. And funding will accelerate our progress on that. But yes, Counselor, that's correct.
Thank you.
You're on mute, Mayor. You're on mute, Mayor.
But it is, oh, that. Is there anything, does anyone have anything else they want to talk about on the? Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, some cities have an office of homeless services. We are at enough of a crisis in homelessness that we have completely reconfigured a single city staffer's role to take on a massive problem that has been decades in the making. And I would urge the city to consider that not only do I appreciate the steps that Gretchen is taking. But by having some dedicated staffing that focuses on this issue, I think we're past time for that. And we should consider that in future council meetings. This council already identified its priorities for this upcoming year. Addressing homelessness is number one. And I think that re, completely re, retooling the position of one city staffer, Gretchen, is helpful. But we're a big city and we just don't know it yet. And I also realize that we do have other city staff who work on homelessness in a variety of other ways. I know it's not just Ms. Bennett. And so I do want to recognize there are countless others from Public Works, Parks, Code Compliance, Law Enforcement, Urban Development. The list goes on and on. But right now, it's Ms. Bennett that we have identified as our liaison. And we are a big enough city that we really need to consider whether we should have an office of homeless services or something like that. Because this problem is not going away overnight. It requires a sustained approach and regular updates. And yeah, money. So that would be my recommendation moving forward.
Great. I'd also ask you to take a look at the Housing Authority and the amount of work they're doing in this area as well. I think it'll help kind of put into a, a, a bigger picture of what we're actually up to in terms of thousands of people we house in this community.
Yes, I'm on the commission for the Salem Housing Authority, as you know.
I know. That's why I was surprised you didn't mention it. Jim?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of real quick comments and then a question. Granted, I want to, Gretchen, I want to add my appreciation for the work that you do. You know, what can I say? It'll, it'll look great on your resume in, in, down the road. The other comment is, and this is certainly more and more serious note, but in the report that you gave us. What, what I read into it is that it is possible. And I'm going to say quite possible, that we're going to be in the same situation six months from now that we're in right now. And the city council may indeed need to extend the emergency. My comment is it, in, in both the parks, both Cascade Gateway Park and Wallace Marine Park. If we could prohibit camping from the water side, at least far enough that if we run into the flooding situation, the, the camping will not be affected. For that reason, and also the environmental reason of what is happening to the river and into Mill Creek. So I would, I'd like us to consider not allowing camping within a certain distance of, of the river or the creek. And, and my question is, and this may not be a fair question, but on the, on the state's formula for distribution of the vaccine. Where do the homeless camp residents fit in?
Thank you. Members of our community who are unsheltered friends and neighbors fit in the number one C designation. If those of you who are familiar with those Oregon Health Authority documents, it is a population that's being a pen, paying, being paid attention to with health issues and public health risk. I've been hearing real interesting increased concerns for pub, the public health side of the coin. I want to make you aware, we did alter the camping area that's allowed to prohibit camping right along the waterways. With the experience of the last flooding and taking a look at the forecast. We want to make sure that people are selecting parcels that are at higher ground for safety and also for the protection of our waterways and streams. And Counselor, I, with every hope, I, I'm so delighted to be collaborating with both private sector partners and public sector partners and an individualized approach with our residents who are camping there to be looking for solutions, you know, rigorously working regularly, daily with our residents on resolving barriers, removing issues, locating solutions to the extent that we're able to do it. So I'm, I'm really excited for the projects that are underway and hoping to see incremental reductions in the use of our parks as people are able to find locations that are, that are more suitable for actual living.
Very good. Yes.
Mayor, just to make sure, particularly for the public who may not be as familiar with this issue as council. The, the reason for the exception, the reason that I recommended the exception to the camping in our parks was COVID. It wasn't because we lack shelter beds. COVID just accelerated and heightened that gap as, as the disease has done in so many parts of our society. Has just exposed that need within, within our region. We're working hard to address that need. I am not going to be coming back to council with a recommendation that has a, an end to that exception tied to a bed for every person who needs a bed. I think that's unrealistic and unattainable in the short term and would cause additional damage to those two parks. So I, I just want, I just wanted to clarify and make sure again, the, the public understands that this, this program, this pilot pro, well, not even a pilot. Because it's going to end, this temporary program is that, a temporary exception that we are doing because of the pandemic.
Thank you. Virginia, did you?
Yes, thank you. Just, I just wanted to say thank you to both Mr. Powers and Ms. Bennett for all your work here. And you guys have touched on a few of the things that I highlighted that I know our communities have been asking about. Things like garbage pickup has been a really big concern. And then, but one of the things I want to ask you about is this firewood point that you made in the document saying that you would not be supplying firewood anymore. And I know there's a huge concern with people chopping down trees in our parks. And so you already answered my question by email, but it was great to learn this. So I would love for you to share that with the general public about how we're going to be keeping people warm without them chopping down trees in the park. So.
Yeah, it's, it's cold outside. It speaks to desiring indoor locations. And we can't have continued damage to the trees and the parks. The thing is, we also risk safety if we go down the pathway of permitting open flames. And so we've been encouraging non-open flame approaches to keeping warm. That could be gear that's designed to sustain cold weather. It could be real hard work on focusing on keeping dry, paying attention to what's underneath the tent as well as keeping everything zipped and repaired carefully. The cooking with propane type, non-open flame approaches. Where you can boil water is another approach, but looking for those non-open flame strategies to not only help the trees, but also that broader issue of safety in human life is what we're concerned about.
Great, thank you. And I would encourage everybody I'm listening to read this document and see what we're doing here and stay educated about all the things that our cities doing to help people in these really dire situations. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Gretchen. Really appreciate the work you're doing. It's, it's really going well. Thank you. I'm going to move on then to public comment. We have one more round of public comment and we need to do our urban renewal action quickly. So.
Mr. Mayor, I think Counselor Gonzalez Rose is in.
I'm sorry. Jose, you've got something?
You know, just, yeah, I want to, I think one of the other challenges we have is, and I want to thank Gretchen and yeah, all the staff. I don't know if people realize the effort they put in day in, day out. They're doing this with real passion, you know. But I know that a lot of people noted that this is the biggest issue in Salem. But half the people in town think we're doing too much. The other half don't think we're doing enough, but as long as it's not in their backyard, you know. So, and I can tell you that somewhat what we're seeing today is still a result of the recession, of great recession. It's, it's, it's the result of, and once we see the true effects of COVID, the real long lasting results, I mean, this is going to get worse, you know. And so the question I had for Gretchen is, in, in this plan, have we found out if there's ways that regular citizens can get involved with their own individual house? How that would work, you know, because in the past, even I've opened my, my house to people that I didn't know, because we had an extra room. Not the safest thing, but it worked out for us when I could do it. And And because that's, that's, I think we're going to have to think bigger on this issue.
Oh, oh, do I agree. And, and I can see a couple of individual volunteer opportunities right now that I would connect people to. And you can see the opportunity to develop additional ones. I absolutely, Counselor, you're correct. There's opportunities to connect with individual unsheltered neighbors in, within the context of an organization to, who can provide training and support. There's opportunities to be supportive of strategies in neighborhoods and areas and through education in the community. I do not right now have a comment on the idea of accessory dwelling units on an individual parcel. That's something that I haven't worked on personally yet, but others may have information on that.
Any, anyone else? Counselor Phillips? Counselor Phillips, go ahead.
Briefly, we are operating under an emergency declaration because there is an emergency. This is a pandemic. It's a once in a century event. And so I, I understand how we got here, but it's just, it's imperative to understand this, especially with all the disinformation and misinformation is out there. It's very serious and we, we had to do this and there's evidence that it's helping. I mean, again, as a state, we're doing better than 92% of our cohorts. So I appreciate the hard decisions that have had to be made before I got here.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on then. Amira Stanley. You have three minutes, Amira.
Hi, Counsel. I'm Amira Stanley, Ward three, I believe. I just moved to Salem on March 18th of 2020. I, I spent my 42 years of life never even saying the word systemic racism or white supremacy. I have never thought about actually purchasing or owning a handgun, carrying a knife or mace to protect myself. I never thought I would be terrified of white people. You see, I was raised in Petaluma, California. I was the only black girl in most of the rooms for a really long time. My husband is white. Today, I fear white people who I do not know. In fact, I have lost too many to count white people who I called family prior to the murder of George Floyd. Today, I have a yard sign in my yard that says, no hate here. But I do this looking over my shoulder and when I go out of town, I take it down. Even sometimes I've been, I've prepared myself to go to peaceful rallies here because I do a lot of activism in the community. And I have a panic attack if it's at night, which is five o'clock now. So I can enjoy these peaceful, amazing opportunities because I'm afraid. I now carry something on me to protect myself. I'm here to say this. I understand how uncomfortable it is to speak about race. I have heavy shame for not fully understanding what systemic racism was, is, or even what Jim Crow was. But we must speak on the issue to fix it. We need to be able to say to each other what white supremacy, that white supremacy has got to end. And it'll only happen if white people get comfortable with being uncomfortable. I appreciate what I see here. I feel a little bit safer. I appreciate all of the effort. I appreciate that. Because what I've been hearing from my community is that their words are falling on deaf ears. I want to say with being anti-racist is a lot more different than diversity work. So I, I beg of you, as somebody who is learning right now to, to do anti-racism work professionally, I beg of you to understand what systemic racism is. And I beg of you to understand it's going to take a lot of self compassion because it's going to feel like an attack. Because once you're a white person and you realize the shame of it all, it makes you not want to deal with it. And Mr. Mayor, you come off like you don't have compassion. But I want to believe that you want this and it's something else. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. Summer Reyes?
Summer's no longer in the meeting.
Okay. Is Betsy Belshaw still here?
No, Betsy is not. We're going on to Misty.
Misty, okay.
All right, there we go. Hi there, Misty, Ward five. This is a continuation of Jonathan Jones's remarks. Do you need my blood on the streets? You already have all of Herman Graham's blood. You already have Gary Floyd's blood. How much more do you need before you accept the truth of this place? And then to you, Trevor Womack, we need, we have not had the chance to meet, and yet I am already familiar with your work. So to you, a few questions, which I hope, but do not expect to have you answer. Number one, why, when your officers arrived at my business on the first, did they immediately circle our small, nonviolent group? Why was their threat assessment so abysmal that they could not see that the mob of over 40, which included uninformed members or uniform members of the hate group, whose initials are PB, was advancing on and threatening a small group? Number two, why did you talk in your press release about a heated verbal exchange? When the fascists advanced on us, we had literally said nothing. They even acknowledged this as it appears to enrage, as it appeared to enrage them. Number three, why did you say that neither group complied with initial dispersal orders when we were asked to move back towards my front doors and did so within three minutes? Number four, why, once we complied with that order, were we circled by armed cops for over 20 minutes? Number five, why is there no mention in the press release that me and my friends were not the subject of unlawful assembly? Number six, why were the Bearcat spotlights trained on us instead of the increasingly dangerous crowd of fascists? Number seven, why did it take a white man speaking to your officers, ensuring them that I was indeed the owner of the business before they would believe me? Number eight, why was your response to my business and my right to defend myself and my people who were working from an actual marching of, or were working from an actual marching violent threat with a history of targeted violence so different from SPD's response to the neo Nazis and other fascists who were coddled when they came to menace outside of the salon? Number nine, can you say with certainty that there is not a white supremacy problem within the ranks of SPD? If you cannot, what is your plan to address this? I encourage those questions to be answered directly to Jonathan on this platform. Otherwise, I'm done.
Okay, great. Thank you, Misty. Anyone have any questions? Okay, very good. I don't see any other business. So I'm gonna adjourn the city council meeting and call the Urban Renewal Agency to order. If the recorder please call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
President.
Board Member Phillips? Board Member Leung?
Here.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Hey. Any additions or deletions, Chris?
No.
Okay. I don't have anyone signed up for public comment. The consent calendar?
I move the approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Lewis.
Consent calendar includes item 3.1A, the December 14th, 2020 draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. Item 3.3A, the Fifth Amendment to the Development Agreement between the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem and Salem LTC Properties LLC. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Hey, any discussion on? Hey. Call the roll again.
Board Member Lewis?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Board Member Stapleton?
Aye.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Board Member Hoy?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Board Member Leung?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I don't see any further business, so without objection. Return.